All right, well, it sounds like we've got a full house and a full agenda, so let's get started.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't heard from Cindy yet, and she's on the ground in City Hall, so.
All right.
And I am confirmed, we are good to go, and I will present now.
Okay.
All right, well, once again, welcome to the Monday, September 14th, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted to have you all with us this evening, at least virtually. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk or assistant city manager to read a required meeting notice. Celeste, are you going to handle that?
I am.
All right, well, have at it.
All right. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council will be present at this meeting through electronic means. All members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings and on FCC TV, Cox Channel 11, RCN Channel 2, and Verizon Channel 35. Public hearings will be held electronically by sending emails to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Comments for public hearings on specific agenda items will be accepted only during the meeting and only electronically at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. That's an email address. During the meeting, the mayor will ask commenters to email their input when the public hearing item is introduced, and later will announce when the time for comment on the item has ended. Emails will be presented during the public hearing for the agenda item. Any general comments for the receipt of public comments agenda item will be accepted electronically, again at the same email address, cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, from 7:20 p.m. to 7:45 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which is today. You can email your general comments at that time, and the emails will be presented during the receipt of public comments agenda item. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items, sent in advance of the meeting will be accepted at the same email address, cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, until noon on the day of the meeting. These comments will be sent to City Council daily and summarized and presented during the written comments agenda item at the meeting. Comments received after noon on the day of the meeting will be forwarded to City Council and summarized at the next regular meeting.
All right, well, thank you very much, fine job there. Let's, as I said, the meeting is now called Order, and we are ready to go. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have the, there it is. So I'm going to go ahead and stand where I am, and I would ask all my colleagues and staff and those at home to also stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to go ahead and stand up here and get started. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Our first item is receipt of public comments and City Council request. So let's go ahead, and Madam Clerk, do you want to summarize the written comments?
Certainly, may I do the roll call first?
Of course.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
I'm here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Carter?
Here.
Thank you, Council. And yes, I will read the summary of written comments. For the Budget Amendment Public Hearing, we received Amanda Coyle from 26th Street asked that stormwater projects continue during the trail expansion and be included in the budget. Dave Gustafson asked that Nova Parks put erosion control in place at the W&amp;O D dual trails project and that the city fund the priority major stormwater projects, especially Trammell Branch. In other comments, Andrea Hasani asked for a refund of money she contributed to the school system because virtual education is not a service. Nikki Graves-Henderson of Maple Avenue asked that part of the fellows tract be reserved as a sanctuary for birds, butterflies, specifically monarch butterflies, and for fireflies, noting that it could be used as an outdoor classroom. Ryan Campbell from the Spectrum Building asked that any outdoor seating permit for Solace Brewing allow for six feet of social distancing for those walking past on the sidewalks, that smoking be prohibited, and that seating be limited to 9:00 p.m., and that servers wear masks. Dee Ellison of Gundry Drive asked that ballot boxes be installed in the city for the November election. And the following wrote in opposition to the previously passed ordinance to limit the carrying of weapons in city facilities, Bob, Ryan, Michael Seapley, and Max Tatch. We received a number of comments about the proposed Washington and Broad Insight Project, and all of those comments were also incorporated into the Planning Department project file. Rick and Janice Langhols of 11th Street wrote in opposition to the project stating that the city can and should do better than what is currently proposed. The Village Preservation and Improvement Society wrote that the proposed project is not ready for the next step in the review process until all the vital elements of the project are available to the public, including commitments to providing parking for neighboring businesses. They expressed concern about many elements of the proposal, including density, height, parking, open space, affordable housing, and commercial to residential ratios. Laura Chalkley of 113 Great Falls Street wrote to support that letter. The League of Women Voters wrote to encourage support of the inclusion of creative cauldron in the project. The following think that the project is not ready to be sent to boards and commissions because of neighborhood concerns about the use of the municipal parking lot, residential parking numbers, proposed work from home units, height, density, massing, North Washington and Park Place signalization issues, sewer and stormwater drainage issues towards Lawton Street and Four Mile Run, neighborhood parking restrictions, and concerns about the status of the 2018 rezoning. And that is from Mary Chavez, 215 Lawton Street, Darren and Susan Robertson, 201 East Broad Street, Eric and Claudia Schultz of 107 Lawton Street, Diane Duggan, 102 Lawton Street, Steve and Kim Deering, 104 Lawton Street, Scott and Julie Badein, 212 Lawton Street, Jennifer Udhar and Rick Ziegler, 213 Lawton Street, John Coleman, 214 Lawton Street, Linda and Moctar Kamel, 216 Lawton Street, and Mary Burke and Patrick Kennedy of 300 Lawton Street. The following also wrote with concerns about stormwater issues regarding the proposed project, Leslie Rye and John Coleman, 214 Lawton Street, Moctar and Linda Kamel, 216 Lawton Street, and Scott and Julie Badein, 212 Lawton Street. They wrote separate letters. Laura Connors Hall, Creative Cauldron Founder and Producing Director, wrote in favor of continued review of the project as a permanent home to creative cauldron, and she wrote in support of the arts and small businesses in the city. The following wrote in support of the project as a permanent home to creative cauldron, and many also expressed support for local businesses. Irene and Reed Chambers of 315 Little Falls Street, Marty Meserve, 708 Berry Street, Shirley Conick of 301 Parker Avenue, Sarah Flanagan, 833 Villa Ridge Road, Tom Gittens, Art and Frame of Falls Church, Jennifer Jacobs, 311 Poplar Drive, Julie Krechman, Rebecca Manicon, 2234 Carmichael Drive, the Mead family at 700 Berry Street, David S. Ortiz and Nicole Johnston, 259 Gundry Drive, Jaclyn Robertson and family, 408 East Broad Street, Andrea Robles, Ph.D., and Solon Simmons, Ph.D., 6361 Lyric Lane, Steve Selby, 833 Villa Ridge Road, John A. Wyant, Marty Bear, 412 North Cherry Street, Dee Ellison, 298 Gundry Drive, Nikki Graves-Henderson, Mark F. Warblood, Maureen Bedetti, 323 Renzway, Gardner Humphries, Laura and Christian Downs of 211 Midville Street, Laura von Schrillts, Sarah Fitzgerald, and Kirk J. and Elizabeth M.G., east of East Broad Street, wrote to express concern about the project, including concerns about increased traffic, the parking issue, and the commercial residential mix. Mary Chavez of 215 Lawton Street wrote that the project was not ready for the next review step and expressed concern about the commercial residential mix, use of the city's parking lot, lot traffic, trash removal issues, the mid-block turn break on North Washington, and negative impacts on neighboring businesses. Linda Kamel wrote again about the need for additional green space in relation to the proposed project. Sandra Tarpinian of 105 Great Falls Street and Jean Iwasaki of 107 Great Falls Street wrote together with concerns about sale of city parking, number of apartments, decreased number of parking spaces, green space, impact on neighboring businesses, lack of a contract with creative cauldron, traffic, trash removal, the turn on North Washington Street, and they asked that the issues be addressed before the project is moved along in the process. Darren and Susan Robertson of 201 East Broad Street wrote with similar concerns about the project, including parking, traffic, impact on schools, the height of the building, and negative impact on the existing businesses. They asked if the project proceeds that the city does not sell the city parking lot, that parking and green space are significantly increased, residential units are significantly reduced, and the height on Lawton Street is reduced. Claudia and Eric Schultz of 107 Lawton Street wrote with questions and concerns about the proposed project, particularly about the use of the municipal parking lot and the proposed height of the building on Lawton Street. Diane Duggan suggested that City Council not allow the use of the city parking lot and not grant any special exceptions for the project. Gabe and Catherine Thompson of Thompson Italians said they did not support the project as proposed. They said the issue regarding the impact on existing business and neighborhoods have not been adequately addressed. Those issues have not been adequately addressed. And later this afternoon, we did get an email from Claire and Dawn's also expressing concerns about the project, and I did forward that to Council and to planning staff, so that can be included as well. And we had some City Board and Commission comments. The Environmental Sustainability Council requested that...
Ms. Heath, I'm sorry, can you go back to the, you just said you got kind of garbled there at the very last...
I'm sorry. Was it the Claire and Dawn's?
Yeah, I think it was Claire and Dawn.
Yeah, I just received that this afternoon, and so they wrote with some of their concerns about the project and suggesting that it wasn't ready to be moved along. And I did forward that to Council and to planning staff. So I can get back into that email after I finish these written comments, if you'd like more detail.
I just couldn't hear you, your audio went out for a minute.
Okay, okay, thank you. So from the Environmental Sustainability Council requested that a new City Council liaison be appointed to replace Mr. Z in that capacity. And the Environmental Sustainability Council Energy Transition Subcommittee provided a report on regional climate, on the regional climate plan and the Falls Church City greenhouse gas inventory materials, and asked for Council feedback on that. The Falls Church Historical Commission requested that the city remove the Hangman's Tree plaque located behind the bus shelter in the planting box at the corner of West Broad Street and North Virginia Avenue. And these comments were all provided to Council in full.
All right, is that it?
That is what I have so far.
So far, so how about the next item, which is receipt of public comment? Is that comment that's come in from 7:20 to 7:45, or did you already cover that?
I did not cover that yet, I'm just looking at that. And if you would like me, like I said, the one that came in late from Claire and Dawn's beach shack, would you like me to outline any of that email?
Sure.
Okay, let's see. Their concerns are about the curb cut on North Washington Street. Parking needs need to be provided closer to businesses than 1,200 feet. They're concerned that the municipal parking needs to be always available as parking and not always, except for eight months. They spoke about a covenant that one of their neighbors received, that the parking will remain. They're concerned that the plan for construction would move parking at least three times. If there is a valet company, they need to be identified and questioned about their process. They would like to see renderings of the views of the building from Park Place and the patio of their building, and they'd like a written agreement that Park Place wouldn't be used for any construction traffic. And let's see if we've got anything else during this period. Let's see, I have a comment from Nicholas F. Benton. "Council, it is inconceivable that in the face of the current economic crisis that the council would prevent further considerations of the Insight Whole Foods proposal from moving forward to a more thorough review by citizens tonight. The project will increase the taxable value at that location from $11 million to $115 million. Nick Benton, 400 James Court." And that's the only other comment we had.
All right, well, thank you very much. So we're now on to the Library Board Annual Report. Do we have a representative from the Library Board with us right now?
I believe Ms. Stephanie Oppenheimer is with us.
All right, well, welcome, Ms. Oppenheimer.
Thank you.
Would you like to give us your report? First off, thank you for you and the rest of the board's fine work. I know it's a challenging year with all the construction and COVID, so we all want to thank you all for the great work you and staff are doing. We really want to hear what you have to say about the future.
Well, thank you. I'm going to have Jenny Carroll start, and then I can follow up after her.
All right. Ms. Carroll?
Yes, can you all hear and see me?
Uh huh, yes, we can.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much for having us. I just wanted to say that we have a new layout this year for our annual report, and I'd like to upfront thank our reference supervisor, Marshall Webster, who put this together for us. So we've had several major events in FY20 that have impacted the library. We had our library project budget approved and construction started, and we moved to the temporary location at the end of February and opened to the public in March, and then COVID happened. However, we were well-prepared for this change because we had had a lot of internal discussions related to the move, and so staff were well-prepared for any changes or challenges that might come. We did not know that it would be a pandemic. We were anticipating a move. So I wanted to highlight our outstanding library staff, who brought enthusiasm and creativity and teamwork to meet all of the challenges that we had this year. We also celebrated Chet DeLong. He has 26-plus years of service, and he's going to continue on once we're able to accept volunteers again, but this is his last year with the Library Board, but he has assured us that he's going to continue volunteering for us into the future. And then the other item is related to diversity and social justice and the events that happened with George Floyd and continue to happen. We made several adjustments to our website, including our resource page. We made materials available in Libby, which is our ebook and e-audiobook vendor, that were instant access items, so that there were no waits for certain items related to social justice and racial equity. We also started our Community Conversations program, and we continue to work on this issue as well. On our second page, we have our stats that we have highlighted in past annual reports. We did have healthy numbers despite the closure due to the move and because of COVID, but our numbers were still healthy. So I was going to ask if Stephanie had any comments that she'd like to add?
Sure, thanks, Jenny. I just certainly would like to follow up with an enormous thanks, of course, to the library staff. Just to give you an idea of how incredibly busy they have been, I'm not sure if all of you have used their curbside return or pickup, but it is poetry in motion, and I have been so impressed with how hard they've been working to keep books in the hands of every imaginable community member. I don't think I have statistics for all of the months, but just looking at July alone, we had about 15,000 resources exchange hands, and I am just blown away by that. So some of those, of course, are e-resources in addition to the physical, but I just, you know, hat tip and big, big round of applause for all of the incredibly hardworking staff. That's just super impressive. Two other quick things I just wanted to add. I'd like to offer my own thanks and gratitude for Chet DeLong. He is truly an inspiration, and he has been certainly, you know, part of my entire service on the Library Board, and I'm going to get choked up, but I just want to say thank you to him. He is an amazing person. Last out is a quick shout-out to the CBC. I spoke today with our two new youth representatives who will be working with going forward for the next year, and they are just incredibly impressive young people, and I'm excited to work with them. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the CBC for organizing that program for, gosh, I feel like it's been about four or five years they've been doing it now. So thank you, and there's a lot to look forward to in the library. Thank you.
And I'd like to just follow up with curbside service. We do about 70 to 100 exchanges a day. So.
All right, lots of activity going on there, that's great to hear. Well, thank you both for that presentation and all the fine work you've done throughout these past months and under very challenging and difficult times, and the construction of the new library goes on, so we're excited about that as well. Are you ready to take questions and comments from Council?
Sure.
All right, so I'm going to open up to my colleagues and see if anyone has anything right now. Does anyone have any comments or questions or requests?
I just had one.
Yes, Ms. Hardy?
So I'll echo the thanks. I think the library's done a remarkable job in adapting to COVID. My family have been big fans of the curbside pickup, and I actually read all five of your top checkout books, but pre-COVID. These days, I only read city news. I guess a million-dollar question that everybody wants to know for all sorts of industries is what does the library experience look like post-COVID, right? Obviously, we'll have new space when the library opens, but is there any early thinking on how the library experience might change to kind of allow for social distancing, especially if the virus is still with us, or just how it might change behavior in the future with more people using online resources?
I think it definitely has, we've seen the impact already in the e-resources, both the ebooks, e-audiobooks, and our streaming services. I think for the future, it's self-check and doing more contactless services. So we have been looking at different options to provide that service to people. So our past pattern has been that our patrons very much like the circulation desk and all of our other service desks, and like having the personal contact and, you know, come and visit their favorite library staff person and get recommendations. With COVID, there are people who are probably going to continue to prefer to have contactless service and who would access either e-resources or self-check machines in the library once we're in the new building.
So is the, I guess, a follow-on question. Is the layout of the new building going to be conducive to providing more self-checkout options? Can we set up more kiosks for that?
There are options out there where checkout can happen on every person's cellphone. So that is something that we're investigating right now. And it would be an app that patrons can download and then be able to check out items on their own in addition to self-checkout kiosks. But that's one option that we're looking at in order to do that. We do have increased space, and I will say, the Library Board had an opportunity to have a tour of the building in construction, and it's really quite amazing, and it's so exciting to see the new spaces and how big the rooms are. We keep calling the conference room on the first floor, on the main level, we call it the medium conference room, and really, it's just enormous compared to what we used to have. So we do have expanded spaces, and I think if we're still doing social distancing, that that will be accomplished more easily in the new building than it is in the trailer.
Great, so I lied, I actually had one more question. So based on kind of the behavior change that you talked about, is there anything that we should anticipate the library being able to open, I guess, with some resources? I guess there's something to be said about being able to browse for books. I know that while we spend a lot of time requesting them and doing the checkout systems through the curbside, do you think there's a chance that we'll be able to let people browse for books and reopen partially at some point?
I think in the new building, that will be more, that is something that we can do, we can accomplish in the new building. It's close to 30,000 square feet, so we will have a lot more space to accomplish the social distancing that we need to have during this time period.
And that while we're under construction in the temporary trailers?
In the temporary trailers, we evaluate that on a regular basis, and given the current circumstances, we're going to remain in the same posture we've been in since March. So the trailer will continue to be closed to the public, but we will provide curbside service, and of course, our e-resources are available 24/7. And we will look at other ways that we can provide services to people along with continuing our virtual programming.
Great, well, thank you for all the hard work. My kids and I miss coming and visiting.
Yeah, and we miss having patrons in the building as well.
All right, other questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Black, can I ask?
Jenny, yeah, thank you guys for everything that you've done, and it's been a lot to balance. I've had a couple of questions from folks about programming specifically for the kids upon return, and I know that's asking you to look at a little bit into the crystal ball, and there's a lot that could happen between now and when the library opens. But kind of what's the plan right now, and what are the contingency plans related to some of the larger format programming at the library when it opens?
So once we're able to have group gatherings, and more than likely, I mean, once again, I don't have my crystal ball, but I think that will be when we are in the new building, we will have larger conference room spaces. We will have to, of course, pay attention to anything that the state and the federal government have in terms of gathering requirements. The spaces that we have that will be in the new building, so there will be a large conference room on the lower level and the medium-sized conference room on the main level, and the large conference room, I think, can accommodate up to 180 people. So we will still, if we're able to, and this is assuming we are out of Phase 3 and, you know, as normal as we possibly can, to have larger group gatherings, especially for storytime. And for our after-school programs, we could increase the number of kids that we could have in those programs. And of course, our performers.
Sure, okay, all right, well, great. We'll certainly look to remain posted on that, and there's a lot of interest in getting back to the, certainly, the kids' programming as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Sure.
All right, others, any other questions, comments?
I have one.
All right, Ms. Conley?
It was my great joy to become the liaison to the Library Board this year, and I have enjoyed meeting with you for the last few months, virtually. And I also have enjoyed your newsletters, so thank you for that. I think that is also a really good way of keeping people aware of what's happening in the library and your social media presence. And my last question is just, with the last budget, we approved no fines for late books, and I'm just wondering how that's going?
So that was enacted on July 1st. Um, so that was enacted on July 1st and, uh, we haven't had due dates yet. So it really hasn't, it, it hasn't had an effect yet. Um, we are, uh, looking to institute, reinstitute due dates, um, starting October 1st and we have already put that in our newsletter and, um, are letting folks know that we are going to start doing that as well. So, um, I may have more information once we're into October and November. Um, so, but for now, everybody is, can keep their books and return them as they, as they are able. Uh, but once we have due dates, then people will have due dates.
Okay. So we'll ask you that one in six months or so. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right. Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to having our new renovated library grand opening coming up here in the coming months. Um, and thank you for the great work you're doing in the meantime. So really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh. All right. Let's move on to the next item, which is a report from the Economic Development Authority. Bob, are you, uh, Bob Young, are you available?
I, I am on.
All right.
Trying to get my video going. I don't know if that'll, okay. Um, I'm going to try to be brief council members, um, but I have a couple of significant things to ask for your, uh, advice, uh, on. But let me start with saying the EDA continues to be very active, as most of you know. Uh, we continue to work on finishing Mr. Brown's Park and keeping it maintained. Uh, we've put out a whole bunch of new trashcans, benches and so on, particularly along Broad Street. Um, we have completed our parking study and are working to implement some of the recommendations from that study. And leading me into, uh, my first business item, as most of you know, we've put out $250,000 in grants to local businesses, 125 businesses, $2,000 each. We also allocated up an additional $100,000, um, to try to see what we could do to assist businesses in dealing with the coronavirus. That particular program has only been able to expend about $10,000. And that's primarily as a result of most of the businesses having dealt with the things they needed to, hand sanitizers, uh, wipes, um, masks and so on. And the continuous feedback we've gotten from the community in a pretty strong fashion is what we really need, honestly, is money. Mainly they're referring to a new PPP or something like that. But, um, most of these businesses are, many of them got PPP loans, grants, and those have run out. So in our last meeting, the EDA voted to repeat the, um, grant program. Uh, if council votes, I believe the votes tonight to reimburse the EDA, um, for the 250,000 that has been put out, including by the way, the money from the George Mason seniors, then we would propose to turn around and put that money out again, since that was our original intention. So the, each of the 125 businesses would receive a total of $4,000. Again, that's contingent on council reimbursing this for the first $250,000 or 240 or whatever it is. There's also been discussion of the possibility of reimbursing from the second tranche. Um, if we put our second tranche out, that council might consider, um, reimbursing this for that, depending upon, of course, how, what other demands are out there. That leads me into, um, our wayfinding program, project. So the EDA voted, um, at its last meeting also to allocate $200,000 to the implementing the wayfinding program. Thank you for putting that up. Uh, you all have a full package on this program. We think it's a great one. We would like to hear, uh, from council on how you all feel about it. Um, also how you feel about the second tranche of the grant funds. But we think the wayfinding project will literally change the face of Falls Church and will change many perceptions of how the city looks. Uh, you can see a map, uh, and again, you have it in your packet, uh, for tonight, on where signs would go, uh, starting with signs as you come into the city, uh, and including, uh, parking directional signs, building location signs and quite a few others. So the, the total program, the estimated cost is approximately 500, $500,000 if we do it in two tranches and 400,000 if we do it all at one time. Um, the EDA would love to see it done all at one time to save money, um, considerable money. Uh, it's likely if it's delayed a few, the second half is delayed a few years, then the price would likely go up as these things happen. So there are a variety of ways the council might provide the other half of the money and I'm happy to have that discussion tonight or offline later. Um, so let me leave it there and ask for feedback from council, first on the grant program and then on the wayfinding program.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. We really appreciate it. You guys have been very active and taken a great leadership role in this crisis and also just with, um, the continued economic success of this city. So we thank you and your colleagues for that. Um, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Young?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could I ask one?
Of course, Mr. Duncan.
Uh, relative to the wayfinding program and the 500,000 versus 400,000, um, I listened into the EDA meeting the other night and I think Letty was on too. Um, my only opinion would be, uh, that particularly for the gateway signs, which I believe on this map that we're looking at are really large red stars.
That's correct.
The discussion was that, you know, if they were constrained in what we could spend right now, we would be able only to afford to do two of those signs probably at the west and east end of the city. Uh, I would like, uh, I would hope that we could discuss, uh, at least committing to doing wayfinding, uh, landmark entrance signs on all four points of the compass, particularly, well, I mean, north certainly, but also on the south end, uh, coming in on South Washington Street. That's obviously, as we all know, a part of the city that has been, uh, under invested in for many years. We're doing much better in that area now, much better. Uh, but, uh, I would like to see us, uh, commit to doing, uh, gateway signs, uh, at all four compass points, uh, especially, uh, to include the south end. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Other comments?
I've got, I've got a couple.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So Bob, um, I've been interested in seeing this for a number of years and I know I'm not alone. So I, I for one, welcome, um, the signage, both for parking, for the site identification, the gateway, et cetera. Uh, I think it's, um, I think it's just incredibly important as we try to continue to establish kind of a unique identity. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh, in, in relation to the design itself. The, the little city emblems, um, that are included, and I'll talk about the gateway sign specifically, both the primary and secondary. If for some reason down the road, uh, 10, 15, 20 years from now, we decided that we wanted to rebrand, uh, or the colors look different on the little city logo, the font, et cetera, would those emblems be able to be easily replaced or are we looking at replacing the entire sign?
No, that, that question has come up more than once and the answer is those signs could be easily detached. Uh, they're designed in such a way that they could be covered with a new design or they could be removed and replaced.
Great. I figured you guys had an answer to that. Is that brick platform, the podium that that sign sits on, is that the way that it's going to look or is that just a representation?
That's the way it would look and, uh, frankly, that's an expensive component. There was a great deal of debate, um, not only about whether or not to have a brick pedestal, uh, which many people thought was very important in terms of it being a substantial sign, um, but also the color of the brick.
Yep. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it certainly parallels the aesthetics and the facade of kind of the colonial brick look that we have around town. Um, I'd say I'm somewhat indifferent, uh, in terms of, you know, what other options are out there, but, uh, I'm not going to nitpick that because I'm sure you guys just spent countless hours talking about it. Um, let me get back to my notes. Give me one second. Uh, are these signs, and I guess maybe this is a question for staff too, which I assume has been involved in this conversation, um, at least somewhat tangentially. Our signage, as we look to roll this out beyond just the EDA, uh, for other types of programs, is this particular design, but the pedestal, kind of the finestration on the signs, the colors and all of that, are we looking at creating kind of a consistent, uniform application with all of our signs throughout the city? Meaning as new signs are rolled out, are we looking to adopt this particular design?
Let me just check to see if Jim Snyder is on the call and if he would like to answer that question.
Maybe that's not a question to be answered. Wyatt, maybe that's just, I'll just make that as a comment right now. Um, you know, we've got a lot of signage up, uh, around the city and some of it's been short-term. Some of it's been things that have been, you know, just around for quite some time. But my recommendation would be if, you know, we've spent a lot of time with the Yiddie, spent a lot of time and effort to come up with the signage and the, the color, the design, the aesthetics, uh, that we look to try to create consistency when the opportunity presents itself. And if that's not, that's not only the signage that we put up, uh, as a city ourselves, but if there's signage being required as part of voluntary concessions with new developments, that we'd be careful to, um, try to maintain that consistency, uh, because I, I think that that consistency and uniformity will, I mean, it, it just obviously enhances, um, the, the impact across the city. Uh, and, and one thing that came to mind is I know that there was a conversation that we had back, uh, this was pre-COVID during budget, um, as we were working with Tenor Hill, uh, to identify some signage around town. Um, it's really any of the programs that we have, just to make sure that, that we're kind of creating a consistent, I think larger companies call it, uh, you know, brand identification. There's, there's all sorts of, of, of metrics that are associated with that, but just to make sure that we're, that we're consistent there. Um, so that would be a recommendation. But otherwise, Bob, I mean, I think this is a great idea. I think it's incredibly important. Um, it's more than just, uh, a facelift. It's really going to help, um, you know, businesses thrive and certainly help people find parking. Uh, and it just, it just creates a really unique kind of aesthetic look for the city. Um, from a, from a, from a grant perspective, Bob, um, and I don't want to sound callous when I ask this question because I know the answer's probably going to be every dollar counts, but based on the feedback that you guys have gotten from the initial grants, if, if the allocation is to take CARES money that we receive to reimburse the EDA, to feed back the program itself at this particular juncture, is the program as it was initially intended with the $2,000 based on, um, those particular qualifications, is that going to make a difference? Or do we need to rethink the program? Or do we think that, um, that money might be better used elsewhere?
Well, we've given that a great deal of thought. Um, staff has put a great deal of time and effort into going over the options, uh, as has the EDA, uh, both formally in the meeting and a lot informally. And our conclusion was if we tried to adjust the criteria, um, that would obviously take some time. And then we'd have to go out for a completely new, um, set of applications. So everybody who wanted to get a grant would have to reapply. So our estimate would be that would delay things by at least a couple of months and quite possibly three months. Uh, in the meantime, uh, as I said earlier, what we're hearing is things are particularly as we enter the fall with respect to restaurants and other businesses, things are getting increasingly desperate. And our thinking and our belief is that it's very, time is very important and the, we'd like to get new grants out quickly. Um, there were many weeks where businesses had the opportunity to apply. We, in the second round, we widened the criteria, um, with a higher potential, uh, possible gross income, including nonprofits and so on. So we, we feel pretty strongly that if these funds, in the scheme of things, $2,000 is not a big deal, but for many, many of these businesses, and we've heard that directly.
Okay.
Many businesses, it would have a big impact.
Okay.
Both financially and psychologically.
Okay. That's all, that's all I need to know. Um, I, I assumed that we had gotten some feedback. That's what was guiding that decision. Uh, so I, I would, I would support that. Um, I think that you're right. Time is of the essence and things are going to get really skinny here towards the end of the year, I'm sure for some of those businesses. Um, my question was really around return on investment and I was really thinking of, you know, do you make the investment there or do we make the investment in signs that are more permanent that may indirectly benefit those businesses? But if you guys feel that that's necessary, I would support that. And then I'm sorry, Bob, just back to the, the signs real quick. Um, uh, and maybe this is for staff too. Are, are we looking at removing, uh, duplicate signs? And I think of the sandwich board signs for parking, are these going to replace that? So we try to create consistency so we don't have four or five different types of signs for the same type of wayfinding? Is that the plan?
That is the plan. We put that under the heading of decluttering.
Yep.
And we think there's, as, as you all know, there are many signs, particularly in the central part of the city, um, that, um, contradict one another, that have different designs. You know, it's, it's frankly kind of a mess. We all know that. And so part of this program would be removing quite a few signs, um, that, that would be replaced, if you will, by what we're proposing here.
Okay. So my, my last comment is, uh, I would recommend that we do this all in one shot. Uh, and again, I, I cannot stress enough that all the time and effort that's been put into this design, uh, and the thoughtfulness around this, that, that we make sure that we maintain that consistency across future signage in the city, whatever that may be. Um, I, I think it's important to have a consistent brand coloring, call it identity, um, design. Otherwise it's, it's going to look a bit patchwork and it kind of loses the, the, the impact. So, um, I support doing it all in one fell swoop. We can talk about where we get that money, but this is something that's been a long time coming and I know we're in a budget crunch, but this is one of those things where I feel like it's an investment that we need to make. Uh, and this type of investment will beget, you know, additional economic development in the city. And so even though we're in lean times, we can't cut off our nose to spite our face. So, um, I, I support that. So Bob, thank you guys for, for the presentation tonight. I appreciate it.
Very welcome. Thank you for your thoughts.
All right. Other comments?
So I'm happy to chime in. I wanted others to go first, Bob, because you hear plenty from me as your EDA liaison for four years now.
Much appreciated, Letty.
Thank you. Um, so I think echoing everything everyone else has said, I think the, I'll start with the wayfinding. I do think it's an important investment in identity, having been there since the inception of kind of where all this signage work comes from. Uh, I think to answer Ross' question, I think it absolutely is meant to kind of change the branding of all our signs. The only ones I think were excluded from this work are street signs, which clearly I think have a certain look that we need to, um, maintain. Park signs, I think, um, potentially might not be included. I know that the Reckon Parks Board, um, has some strong sentiments about the way their signs look. And then historical markers, I think are the other, the third category where I don't think the sign program, all the inventorying and rationalizing that was discussed doesn't touch. But otherwise, completely agree. I do think it's important that, for branding, um, and especially now, I think as we think about coming out on the other side of COVID, I do think it's an important investment to help the city recover and help our businesses recover by branding ourselves as unique and independent so that you know when you're in the city's borders. Uh, my question I think is more for Wyatt of, um, at some point, would this qualify as a CIP item, right? So it certainly is something that lasts more than 10 years and it's over the kind of the dollar threshold. Rather than fund it out of operating, um, is there a way to manage it out of the CIP? Is there a way to manage it out of the CIP budget?
So we want to work with the EDA and try to implement this plan as sort of expeditiously as we can. And so whether the best route to do that is through the CIP or the operating budget, we can discuss. I'm not sure it makes a huge difference. I think technically, if it's over $150,000, it may qualify as a CIP. But in some respects, that can actually be a slower process than having it in the operating budget. So we're going to be working to try to come up with the, with the best solution on, on how to move this forward.
Great. And then my next comment is, so I agree in general that we should, you know, get the gateway signs up. And then if we had to prioritize the parking, especially in the downtown area, and especially when we get to the Broad and Washington project, I think we'll be talking a lot about parking in that area. That's probably where I would prioritize. So not only that park and 100 block of Park Avenue Maple Lot that I think is infamous for being confusing and having too much sign clutter, but the Kaiser and George Mason Square Garage, which are really great assets the city has negotiated its usage on. I think I'd feel like a broken record in this, but I do wish that we could actually work with those building owners to get better signage up to make the public parking amenity there that much more prominent. So I would emphasize prioritizing those if we do have to prioritize where to spend the money. But that's it. Thank you for the leadership and all the great work on this, Bob.
All right, thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, Mayor Charter, can I say something?
Yes.
I think I attended the EDA meeting where this was first presented. And Mr. Young, is this the first time we've seen this at a city council meeting?
I think it, I believe that, that some council members have seen it over time. This project's been ongoing for the better part of a year.
Right, right.
But I think it's the first time it was provided to all council members in its full glory.
So I just want to say, well done. I, I like the signs. I like the colors. I like the, the locations. I love that it says welcome on it. So I think it is very well done. As far as the financing goes, I, we're not, are we voting? We're not voting on the financing tonight, right? We're just starting to consider this?
Yeah, that is correct. The financing is a discussion for a future date.
So will that come up in next year's budget?
That would be the natural place. But as I've noted, we're going to work with the EDA to provide the council and the EDA with options on how to move this forward.
Okay.
Possibly sooner than that.
Okay. So as, again, I think it's a, I love that it's such a detailed map and that there has been so much thought going into different kinds of signs and the best locations for all of them. I think it is, as Mr. Lincoln asked, sorely needed. And I think this is really good. My other question relates to the grants, the grant funding. And you're proposing that the second round of grants comes out of the CARES funding, which is a limited pool of funding. And I'm just wondering from Mr. Shields, as we talk about this, I know we're going to take up CARES funding later in the budget. But what portion of our CARES funding would then have gone to help businesses?
So first I'll state, you know, my understanding from the EDA's action last Tuesday is that they plan to proceed with the second tranche, whether the council elects to use additional CARES money to reimburse the EDA for the second tranche or not. So that is a decision that the council can look at when you're considering the whole use of CARES money at a later meeting. If this were allocated, then it would be a total of $500,000 allocated to business micro grants. $250,000 has been approved already. And so what the potential would be going forward would be an additional $250,000.
Okay, and our, our total amount is 2.?
Just about 2.4 million.
So it's about 20%.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify?
Of course.
What I'd like to clarify is, as, as I said earlier, as I understand it, the first tranche will, of reimbursement, 240 some odd thousand dollars will be voted on tonight, or at least very soon. And it's those funds that we would propose to put out for the second tranche. These things are easily confused. There, there remains then on the table the possibility that some weeks, or at least some weeks down the road, council will be considering the second tranche of money coming from the federal government to the state to the city, and the possibility of reimbursing our second tranche. I hope that's clear.
Yes.
It's the EDA's intention that that second, if we were by chance reimbursed for the second tranche, we would not intend to have that money go out for a third wave of grants, but rather those funds could be used for other things. One possibility that's been floated is those funds, some significant portion of them could be used to add to the 200,000 the EDA has already committed to do the whole sign package at one time. That's one possibility. There are many others.
And Bob, to clarify, the EDA vote last week to do the second tranche was not contingent on getting reimbursed in the future. You all felt strongly enough that we wanted to support businesses now, that it wouldn't be dependent on a commitment that we would reimburse you.
I believe the motion was explicitly contingent on reimbursement from the first tranche, which I believe is, as I said, it's on the docket tonight. And it's part of the package the council put together. Is that correct, Wyatt?
So I get, my next question, just about the second tranche of grants. There are some businesses that weren't eligible the first time around because they have not been in business for a year. And now they have been in business for a year. I know you had said you wanted to minimize the work required to deliver those tranches, but I'm just wondering if there's any consideration of that at all?
Well, the, the strong feeling on behalf of the members and the staff is if we change anything, we have to go through a whole new round of applications. Now, your thought could be implemented by us going out and saying, if there are any businesses in the city that weren't in business for a year, you know, restricting it to that one criterion, you can apply, you know, click here. Then we'd have to figure out, you know, allocate a little bit more money. Frankly, I doubt there are any, but if there are, it couldn't be more than a few.
I just, well, you know, on Facebook yesterday, and Tint was celebrating their first anniversary yesterday. So that one just popped up as a small business, small locally owned business. So there may be a few others, but I don't know.
I think we could figure out how to do that. Of course, I always think it's easy and then staff has to do it.
Exactly.
I get my head taken off. That's okay, we can figure it out.
Anyway, I think it would be worth it just to look and see if there are others that either applied and were not eligible because they weren't around long enough or had very simple reasons and, and ask them if they'd like to apply.
Okay.
All right, other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, just a couple of comments and questions. So I think we have to be honest that all the EDA money is eventually, ultimately the taxpayers' money. So what we really need to understand is in a condition of scarcity, which has been aggravated by the pandemic and the reactions to the pandemic, is, is this the best use of money? You know, I was supportive of the first tranche because we were clearly in an emergency situation. And certainly it continues, although it's loosened up fortunately a bit. And it's always been my preference on spending money helping the economy come back rather than basically paying businesses to maintain themselves during a shutdown environment. So I'm still interested in seeing if the expenditure of this money would be better somehow in addressing, allowing more businesses to be open and how we provide them with those direct resources as opposed to just simply grants. I'm also interested in the effectiveness of the grants. Are those businesses still active? Are they paying taxes? Has our grant actually helped them stay open or not? So I'm interested in performance because if we're going to put money out, we always need to get performance. The second tranche, as has been described, I'm, I'm interested in much more about that. This is new information, the first time it's been presented, as, as I understand it. Let me talk about the wayfinding signs for a minute. I clearly like the design. I would love to do them. But in an environment where we have stormwater issues that we're going to be asking people to pay up, one way or the other, our taxpayers or, or property owners, it's hard for me to justify spending $400,000 or $500,000 on signs which are very attractive, which I would love to do. But in an environment where we know we have fundamental infrastructure issues that have not been addressed. And recognizing again, that all of this money is ultimately the taxpayers, it's hard for me to prioritize the expenditure of $400,000 for waste finding signs over spending that money for critical needs such as infrastructure. So hopefully there'll be an opportunity for the community to weigh in on these proposals before they're finalized. Again, appreciate the work, appreciate the motivations. But I have some serious issues about the expenditures as to whether this is the best approach, certainly in the case of the wayfinding signs right now, considering the condition of scarcity in which we find ourselves, number one. And number two, immediate needs such as stormwater infrastructure, which need the expenditures in a very near future. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Other questions or comments? All right, I'll give you a few. First off, Bob, thank you so much. You guys have always shown such great leadership when it comes to our local economy or local businesses. A couple of questions for you, some of which you already got into with respect to the first tranche and the reimbursement that may happen tonight would actually go to the first wave, right? Not the second wave? And the money that's not allocated by council would just be absorbed by the EDA's pot of money from the sale of the Harris Teeter land in particular? Is that right?
That's, well, that's correct. Except the EDA has voted to do the second set of grants if the first set is reimbursed.
I see. So the first set, if we were to reimburse that tonight, that, which has already been spent, would be a reimbursement of the first round. And then the EDA would allocate the second round. Whether or not funding comes later on, that remains to be seen. And irrespective, the money would have been spent and that would have come from, come from the EDA's coffers if it's not reimbursed from city council or city funds. Is that right?
That is correct. And I would also add that the EDA members, and including especially myself, absolutely view these funds as taxpayer funds. They are owned by the taxpayer. They're in kind of a special category, if you will. They're not in the, the general fund. But nonetheless, we maintain a vigilance with respect to spending those funds.
Okay, I, I certainly can see the need, and I think we all can. I do share a bit of concern, and I guess I'll articulate it here, with respect to HEROES funding, CARES funding. My understanding at the federal level, there's been some discussion about loosening up the rules that were put in place earlier in the year. So in other words, previously there was limited things the money could be spent for and the like. The idea being that there'd be additional funding forthcoming that would be for general replacement of lost revenues to localities and states. It seems that that may be unlikely to happen, the additional revenue to states and localities, the replacement of lost revenue. But what I have heard as well is there's some discussion of loosening the rules on the money that's already been provided. In other words, the federal government may say you can more broadly use the money that was originally set forth. And if that's the case, it may be possible that money we've received already that we think could only be spent for COVID response could in fact be spent more broadly for traffic calming or storm sewer, or whatever it might be. And so I guess the only thing I might say at this point is I think it's very worthwhile what you've done. But I would say for future spending, we need to keep our eye on what the federal government does. And if it does loosen the rules on money that's already been allocated that we thought originally needed to be used solely for COVID relief, but in fact becomes more broad, then I think we need to consider whether a second tranche is more important than, as you just heard a minute ago, storm sewer relief, stormwater flooding relief or traffic calming. And so we may need to have a more broad comparison of what these funds could be used otherwise for than we do at this particular moment. I'd also like to hear more from the schools as to their costs and whether in fact they might want to do testing before, you know, they reopen and what kind of cost they're looking at as well. So I do think there's a lot of competing priorities. There may even be more if federal legislation changes how this money can be used. So I'm fine supporting the money that's already been allocated as to the second tranche. I do want to have some further discussions, some further consideration, which I know is not before us tonight. But I just want to set the table that we may need to have some additional discussion at a later point when things become a little clearer. As to the wayfind signs, I think those are a great idea. I, I really like the idea of tying everything together. And Bob, just for clarity again, this would be money the EDA would initially spend and be seeking reimbursement or is seeking reimbursement now? Or I guess would be seeking reimbursement at a later point from city council? Is that right?
Just to be very clear, there's no thought on the EDA's part to seeking any reimbursement for the first $200,000, which would get us the first set of signs. Gateway, a couple of gateway signs and parking signs, the things that have been prioritized. So there's no thought at all to that being reimbursed. I certainly understand and agree with the need for council to have more information along the lines of what you just enunciated before allocating that second tranche. But, you know, we'd like to, at a minimum, go forward with the first tranche. I've discussed a couple of ideas with the city manager and I'm sure there will be more discussions about ways we might implement the entire program at one time and thereby save time and money. I personally believe, and I think the EDA members believe, that implementing the full signage program will help with the perception of the city as, to put it loosely, kind of having this act together, branding itself in a much finer fashion. But there are a variety of ways that might be done. And so there should be discussions going forward. But I completely agree with what you just said.
Okay, just so I completely understand, and maybe my colleagues already do. But so this is, if we do it at one fell swoop, it's a $400,000 project. If we do it in two legs, it's a $500,000 project. At the end of the day, is the EDA proposing putting any of its money in to this project? Or is this a totally city funded project? You said 200,000, that's from EDA funds?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's without any thought or hope for reimbursement of that $200,000.
Gotcha. And so the city would sort of almost do a match of 200 as well? Is that what you're contemplating?
That's the hope.
Okay.
That's the dream.
Okay, but that's not before us tonight.
No, that's not, absolutely not.
That's something we'll have to have further discussion about. Is part of your project as well dealing with, with standards for, I wouldn't say building signage, but like the parking signs on buildings and the like? Or is it just essentially street signs, you know, things that are in the public right away?
The hope is that we can standardize, certainly with new projects, you know, including the ones that are on the table now. We would hope that the city would see fit to require developers to conform and their parking signs, their directional signs and so on, would conform to this standard, if you will. The, the, going forward, we believe it would be critical that council, to the extent possible, require that there be conformance to this program so we don't, over the next so we don't, over the next decade, have a proliferation of signs that look like whatever anybody wants them to look like.
And let me ask a question to city manager. Are we, quote, in some fashion, going to adopt these kind of standards for the city as a whole? Is the EDA just sort of putting these forth? Or is this going to be part of some kind of, you know, standard street package that'll be part of our planning documents for developers, for building signage, their parking, wayfinding to match these? Any thought been given to that yet?
So I will confess, I understand this to be wayfinding signage to help the traveling public get to destinations in the city, whether it be important public facilities, commercial district, public parking. And that's really what the project is. It would not influence all of our other signage. But I might need to get a bit better educated and just, you know, fully up to speed in terms of what the planning staff are thinking about how far this could go. I think what's on the table, though, is probably more narrowly considered just in, as I stated. Whether we can take it further, I think that's going to be a funding question and other planning will need to be done with that.
I'm not sure so much it's a funding. I mean, to my mind, if, for example, Washington Broad were to incorporate parking signage that looks like this parking signage, they'd have on the side of their building, you know, blade sign that matches up with this sign. And I mean, they'd be paying for it. It just would be consistent with this. And I guess what I'm trying to understand is this something that planning staff has bought into? Or do they feel like, okay, well, we're going to have our own, you know, each building's going to have its own parking blade sign? Or is it going to try to match up with the rest of the city's sign that we're looking at right now? I mean, to me, ideally, you'd have uniformed signage. So if you want to park somewhere, everything looks pretty similar. You look for a big green P on a sign that looks kind of like the rest of the signage in the city.
So just briefly, the Broad and Washington project is going to have public parking? So yes, the aesthetic would apply to their public parking. Take another development like, say, Broad Falls, which does not have public parking. We would not be anticipating that their signage would need to follow ours. But the public parking should have a similar look so people know they can recognize it.
So are we essentially adopting this signage? I mean, that's sort of what my point was. So for example, Washington Broad, when the, you know, the movie theater project comes online, are they going to have signs that look like this too with a, you know, P on a blue field that has the same general look? Or I guess I'm just trying to find out whether planning staff has bought into what we're seeing.
It's a good question, and frankly, I don't know what the planning staff is thinking about that. So maybe we get back for, this is meant to be just an awareness of where the EDA is on this. We might need a bit more of a thorough discussion on this.
Okay. I mean, ideally, to my mind, things would all fit together throughout the whole city, not just sort of a one-off from the EDA and a one-off from the movie theater and a one-off. But I think we can do a little better on that. And I think the EDA's done a lot of heavy lifting to get us there. All right, Bob, and one thing also I just mentioned, Ross touched on it, this brick pedestal for the parking sign and the green pedestal. The only I would say is that for sight distance, sometimes having that kind of density there means you can't see around if you're driving one direction to the other direction. And I think that that could be a concern of mine. It's not a major concern, but something I think to give some thought to.
I believe that our consultants have looked at that and been very careful about where those signs are placed. But I'll make a note and be sure that that's double-checked.
Okay. It's a small point, but I just, anyway. All right, I think that's all I've got. Does anyone else have any additional comments? All right, Mr. Young, thank you so much for the great work you guys have done and want to continue to do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your consideration. And we'll continue our discussions with staff and with the city manager's office. Thank you.
Uh huh, thanks so much. All right, let's keep on moving. And next up is a resolution honoring Betty Blystone. And the vice mayor will do the honors for that. Vice Mayor Conley? Vice Mayor, are you on mute or are you available?
Sorry, I'm here. I had opened the resolution and then I couldn't get back to the meeting. All right. Yes, I'm here and I'm thrilled to read this resolution. I just need to get it again.
While she's doing that, Mr. Shields, you got it, okay.
A memorial resolution honoring Elizabeth Anderson Blystone. Whereas the City of Falls Church lost a valuable and cherished citizen with the passing of Elizabeth Betty Blystone, a 60-year resident and former mayor of the City of Falls Church. And whereas Mrs. Blystone was a member of the Falls Church League of Women Voters for 50 years, was elected president of the chapter in 1968. And whereas Mrs. Blystone became increasingly involved in the community, serving on the mayor's committee tasked with planning Cherry Hill Park. And whereas in 1971, Mrs. Blystone was appointed to the Falls Church School Board, serving until 1983. She was elected chair in 1975. And Mrs. Blystone served on the Virginia School Boards Association, including a term as president in 1980. And in 1984, she was appointed to fill an unexpired term on the Falls Church City Council and was subsequently elected by her fellow residents to an additional term and selected as mayor in 1988. And whereas Mrs. Blystone also served as president of the Citizens for a Better City, CBC, from 1991 to 1993, and again from 2003 to 2004. And whereas she was honored with many community awards, including the Maddy Gundry Award from the Falls Church Commission for Women, the Carol V. Shreve Award for Meritorious Humanitarian Service from the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and the Jane Wayne Dexter Award for Excellent Service from the CBC. And whereas Mrs. Blystone and her city council colleagues in the 1970s and 1980s guided the city through many challenges, including population decline and major infrastructure improvement needs, to establish a legacy of excellence in governing for the city.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, honors Elizabeth Anderson Blystone and her legacy of service to the community and offers sincere condolences to her family on her passing. And this is adopted upon reading, so there's no action that's taken or needed, to my understanding. Is that correct, either Madam Clerk or the city attorney?
That is correct.
All right. Does anyone have any additional comments they'd like to make?
All right, well, I guess we all owe debt of service. Obviously, the incredible service and the lengthy service that Miss Blystone provided to our community is really unparalleled in our history. And so our great thanks go out to her family for the service that she's provided to all of us. So thank you, Betty Blystone.
How widespread do you think the knowledge is of approval?
All right, let's go on now to the next item, which is the CBC presentation. Mr. Shields, who's going to do that? Is there someone here from the CBC?
How widespread is it?
Let me defer to the clerk of court. Do we have someone from the CBC for this item?
Yes, I'm here.
Can I just remind everyone on this call to mute your video or your computer if you're not speaking?
Mute your microphone?
Yes, your microphone and your computer, whatever you might have.
There we go. Hi, yes, we have Nancy Brandon from the CBC. She was just going to give you an overview of the program.
All right, well, welcome and thank you. We'd love to hear more about it. I'm actually fairly well-versed about it, having my kids have participated. And they've kind of had a great experience and seen the world through a different lens and what we do here in the city. It's been a wonderful experience. But I'd like to hear more. Tell us more about how the program's working this year.
Well, that's exactly what we hope for all of our representatives. First of all, the Citizens for a Better City and the Youth Rep Program want you all to know how much we appreciate your recognition and support for this program. I'm the current chairman, and the other committee members are Lindy Hockenberry, Julie Krechman, and Sally Eckfeld. With few exceptions, the current committee members have been involved with this program from the beginning in 2014. As background, the CBC is the oldest civic organization in the City of Falls Church and was originally a local political party. But the decision was made a number of years ago to shift from running candidates to promoting civic leadership development. We're all aware of how many local leaders have started their leadership careers in, by working, volunteering on the boards and commissions or have been very active in civic organizations. At the time that we were considering what we wanted to do, we had one CBC member who was on a college-level board with a student representative. And the Falls Church City School Board had a student representative in 2013, 14 school year, which they appreciated. So when we started, we began to look for programs around the country that were doing this, what we were interested in. And as far as we know, this is the only area that has a youth program like we have. So we established our goals, which remain the same today. Create opportunities for youth to learn about local government and civics firsthand. Provide opportunities to volunteer. Enhance college and scholarship applications. Better engage parents and peers in community issues. And demonstrate our city's commitment to youth by giving them a voice in the decisions. So in May of 2014, the city council voted unanimously to support this program. And we had our first group of students that fall, which was like 2014. Any youth in the City of Falls Church who is a rising ninth grader, 10th grader, is eligible to apply for the program. And this includes homeschool and private school students, of which we usually have one or two every year. Students who have not had leadership opportunities are encouraged to apply and are selected and assigned based on interest, commitment, and potential. So we start our program, usually January or February, we start advertising. We register students from March till part of April. We interview the students, usually in April or May, and assign them to committees. Then we have a training session by June with our wonderful Falls Church citizen Gina Kechichi, who does a wonderful job with that. Then they are formally recognized and sworn in, usually by the city council in June. This year, because of the pandemic, we extended registration till the end of the school year. We did our interviews in August before school started. And they will be sworn in tomorrow by the city clerk at 4 o'clock. Training will be at the end of this month. Currently, we have 22 boards, commissions, and civic organizations who have student reps this year. The youth representatives are usually non-voting members of their assigned board or organization. But we ask that the board, the chairman, email and send agendas and any reading material before the meeting to the youth reps. We ask them to encourage them to become involved in the discussions and hopefully assign a mentor to them. We also want them to be included in any assignments or board activities or projects. And just housekeeping, they need to be excused by 9:30 if they need, if there's a reason they can't stay later. And written parental permission is required in advance for a representative to ride in a car with another adult. And we're not too concerned about that now since everything is, we're Zooming or digitally meeting. The only requirements for the youth reps, once they become a youth rep, is to attend as many meetings as possible and contact their chairman if they're not able to attend. Respond to communications and attend youth rep committee meetings. Attend a training session and prepare a short paragraph about their experience. And I would like just to take an opportunity to read part of one of those paragraphs, which sort of summarizes what we hope the kids are getting out of this, I mean, the young people are getting out of this. Some of the pros that stood out from this opportunity, including seeing how important local advisory committees/councils are in ensuring the values of their constituents. It was also extremely valuable to learn how to effectively communicate ideas and improve on public speaking. Above all was the ability to observe firsthand a trend in which more members of the public coming to meetings translated to more productive and wholesome action plans. Seeing the effectiveness of democracy, especially in this time, was, to me, an extraordinary source of hope and inspiration. So our program started in 2014 with 17 youth reps, and this year we have 51. So I think the program is pretty successful.
Well, we think so too. That's a really incredible story you've got to tell us tonight. And I think we've all experienced that through going to boards and commission meetings and seeing our youth participate at council meetings and the like. It's been an extraordinary program, at least from my perch. And so we're delighted, I think, once again, to sponsor and to encourage and seek the participation of these incredible youths. So our hats off to you and the rest of the folks at CBC for initiating and promoting this great program.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments? We do have a full agenda tonight.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Nancy, I just want to, I want to thank you guys. I certainly couldn't be more proud and supportive of these types of initiatives. Early in passion, civic engagement is what's going to help preserve democracy in this country. And I think it's great that you guys are spearheading this partnership. And, you know, for all the students participating, thank you guys for remaining involved and choosing to be involved. It's incredibly important, both at the local, state, and national level. So Nancy, thank you to the CBC and for all the students that have been involved. Really, really proud of this initiative.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Nancy, I know that you all didn't plan it this way because of the pandemic, but this is a very fitting way for the city to recognize Citizenship Day, which is on Thursday, September 17. That is the holiday that celebrates the fact that there is no more important job in our democracy than that of citizen. And so thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I'll just echo those thanks. And I know Nancy worked really hard on lots of details to make this work. And that was a lot of students that you are placing and a lot of interviews. And I commend all the boards and commissions and community groups to work well with these students, give them meaningful jobs that they can, when they're done, write something just as nice about what they've learned about volunteering and being part of the community.
All right. Well, once again, we thank you. We look forward to the next generation of leaders through your participation in your group. And so we thank you again. All right, let's move on now. Are there any council requests? And again, we've got a very busy agenda. We're not even at the start of it yet. Any council requests quickly?
I had some.
All right.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I think there was actually a motion just to recognize the students that we usually take.
All right, I'm sorry. You're right. So let's go ahead. Do we have a motion regarding, do we have a motion on the table?
Some, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, I presume because of the medium we're in, you want a roll call vote?
Yes, please. Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you for voting to recognize the students who'll be participating.
Yep, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's now move on to council requests. And if we can, let's keep the pace going. We do have a lot to do tonight.
All right.
Did you have something?
Yes. Wyatt, I don't know whether you're planning on talking about it anyway in your city manager's report, but I wanted the public to be updated on voting. I think it came up yesterday in the Legal Women Voters Forum. But the new ballot box that was installed, I wanted to make sure the public is well-aware of the process for early voting starting this Friday and as well as where they can drop their mail-in absentee ballots. So that was my first one. Second, Indigenous Peoples' Day is coming up, and with both the community center and the library closed, past several years, we've been hosting a coat drive for Indigenous Peoples. I wanted to see whether staff had thoughts on whether we could move that to City Hall, since it's partially open, if there's any other ideas. Third has to do with COVID. So I can bring it up in more detail when we, if you have a part in your report about COVID, but I saw that Alexandria actually passed a mask ordinance this past weekend that would be effective October 1st. I wanted to better understand from both the city staff and I guess city attorney, whether that's authority that we have as well, and whether we think that's something we should consider doing. And then fourth is a tactile request. Over the weekend, I had sent a request that came from a constituent of Delegate Simon, who had concern about the crosswalk at Haycock and Route 7 not being restripped after the utilities work that was there this past spring. So that's it for my fourth.
All right, thank you. If you have any response, feel free to make it. Mr. Shields, if not, maybe just take note.
I have taken note, and I will, just on the, the first one, I do be happy to emphasize the point that our ballot box is installed, and it's a very secure ballot box, and it meets all of the state's recently developed regulations. I do encourage people to go to the city's registrars page on the city webpage for all of the information on voting. I'm always a little bit afraid of mentioning dates or processes myself out of fear of getting something wrong. So please do go. The information is readily available at the city website, www.fallschurchva.gov. And if you go to the registrars page, you'll find all the information you need about how to vote this, in this coming election. Thank you. For the other three items, if I could get back with you on those, and I'll get back with the entire city council on responses to those.
Thank you.
Other council requests?
I have three requests, Mayor.
All right.
The first one is just from Ms. McCoskeri. Can you clarify for the public, with our special election that's coming up, November 3rd, for a new city council member, when will that person take office and begin to serve?
They would be, they would take office as soon as, first, the election is certified by the Electoral Board. And once that happens, then the person would need to go take the oath of office with the clerk of the Circuit Court. And so it should be able to happen relatively quickly after the election. However, there's no certainty. If something happens with the election, there are questions about certifying it, et cetera. So we have to be a little bit flexible. But my expectation would be that it won't be much more than a week after the election, assuming all goes well.
Okay. And why would the Circuit Court have to do the swearing in? Doesn't Ms. Heath usually swear us in?
Not for council members, I don't believe. Ms. Heath can correct me if she's wrong, but I think for new council members, they take their oath.
From me.
Paul Ferguson. Do they take it with you?
Yeah, I think it's in the charter.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I knew I should check with somebody.
Okay. So that we should look forward to happening sometime in November, either, I would assume for the meeting at, the week after the election or the week after that, if there's some kind of delay.
I think that's right. We just have to keep an eye on the election. If everything goes smoothly, yes.
Okay.
You know, it's gonna happen, that's all.
Very good. And my second question is this related to the comments that Ms. Heath read the, back in August, the Historical Commission sent us a request to remove the Hangman's Tree plaque, and I'm just wondering how we go about making that happen? Do we have to pass a resolution or vote on that, or how does that work?
I am not sure I will have to.
Yeah. This was a question from a prior meeting, and let me just check in on, on the status on that. I think we, I don't think it requires the formal council action, because I think it was originally placed there at the request of the Historical Commission. So we just need to follow up and, on that request.
Okay. And, and then my last thing is just, we're in the middle of Welcoming Week, and Welcoming Falls Church is sponsoring events and activities, a way to get involved with welcoming immigrants and others to our community. And last year, they did a lot in September. Hannah Jordan has been sending out information, and if she hasn't sent to the city council, she will soon, so everyone can see some of the ways that we can all be involved in welcoming. And there's going to be an all-city read of the book Refugee by Alan Graz. And I know there are copies of that available at Mary Riley Stiles Library, but the author will be here in October. So I would encourage everyone to get involved in that as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Other comments, requests?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder just one. According to news accounts, there was a homicide in the city of Falls Church within the past week or so. I'm interested in knowing, at, at that venue, has there been prior criminal activity? Was this gang-related? And are there, are there anything else that the city council should do to support our police and investigative agencies? I take every serious crime very personally and very seriously, and I want to know more about what occurred in this case. It may need to be in closed session, whatever, but I want to know more, and I want to know if there's any further action we can take to prevent a recurrence of anything like this happening in the future. Wyatt, do you have any comments for me on that?
Thank you for raising this. And this, on Friday morning, early in the morning, there was a homicide at the Diva Lounge on Wilson Boulevard. And this is the first homicide in the city since 2012. The city police department is working this case very diligently. There is a suspect, and, and we are working through the process to bring that person to justice. We're also currently, the ABC license for this establishment has been suspended. And any other information, I think we need to run through the proper channels, through the PIO in terms of how we, in the police department, in terms of how we get information out to the public. But we'd happy to brief council members on what we do know in a, in a more private setting, just to ensure that justice is administered properly in this case.
Thank you for that information. Look forward to any additional information that can be provided and in the appropriate way. Thank you.
Any other council requests? All right, let's move on to business, not, not yet to business, but the report of the city manager. And by the way, I also will like to have a break sometime this evening. So at some point in the meeting, which it looks like it's going to continue to be lengthy, I want to take a five-minute break for everyone to refresh. So just keep that in mind. Let's move on now to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter. Just a quick update on two items that I know the city council and the public has a great interest in on the, in the area of Stormwater. We will have a briefing and a discussion with the city council next Monday, September 21st, in work session to discuss the recommendations of the Stormwater Task Force and a plan for moving those projects forward to final engineering in the current year. We also will provide a report to the city council at this work session on an update on the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. We have made progress over the summer, and we want to report that out to the council and the community. On Friday this morning, this week at 9:00 AM, we'll have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting, where we'll review the FY 20 year-end financials. We'll also discuss our CARES budget for the next round of CARES funding. And we'll also discuss the opportunity to have a bond refunding, which will save the city money, taking advantage of lower interest rates, plus an, an additional issuance of debt for some of the Stormwater projects and other items. So that then will come to the city council for briefing at your follow-up on the bond resolution and the year-end financial report. That is planned for October 5th. And then lastly, I just want to note, staff is working to put together a panel of economic experts to discuss the economy in the COVID era, and thinking about what the future of the economy is for the capital region, and what that means for us here in the city. We're also targeting to put that together for the council work session on October 5th. Lastly, I just want to celebrate the achievement of Sheriff Biddle, who retired in August since the council's last meeting. The mayor did sign a proclamation thanking Sheriff Biddle for his career of service to the city of Falls Church. Sheriff Biddle started his career in public safety with the city on August 15th, 1966, and his retirement was also on August 15th, 54 years later, which makes him the longest serving employee in the city's history that, that we are aware of, and likely one of the longest careers and distinguished careers in law enforcement in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Sheriff Biddle did have a small celebration with, with a few, a few of his colleagues, I think out of respect of COVID. And, and so that was a very nice send-off that was arranged by Sheriff Matt Kay. And so I'll close my report just by thanking our current sheriff, Matt Kay, for stepping up and leading the sheriff's department after Sheriff Biddle's retirement. But mostly, just want to thank Sheriff Biddle for his long record of support, both as a police officer, rising to sergeant, and as a sheriff since 1990, since 1992. Also, just note, as sheriff, he had a very strong relationship with the police department and supported so many community events, including the Tenner Hill Heritage, the Blues Festival, and 4th of July, Memorial Day, the Fun Run. He was always there to help support public events in the city, as well as all of his other duties as the sheriff for the city. So thank you, Sheriff Biddle. That's all I have to report tonight.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Shields, and thanks as well to Sheriff Biddle. It's my honor to sign that proclamation just recently for such a, to honor such a great service to the community, unparalleled service and commitment to our community and to our people. And so our hats off to you, Sheriff Biddle, and our great thanks to you for your service. So unless there's anything else, Mr. City Manager, why don't we move on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just very quickly on Sheriff Biddle, I too would like to thank him for his years of, of extraordinary service to the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. All right, let's move on then to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, we have some second readings, and they are both public hearings. So we are doing the same process we did last time. If you wanted to let people know, they could start to send public comments that they have for this first item, as soon as I'm finished reading it. It is TO 20-20, Ordinance to Amend Ordinances 2009 and 2012 Regarding the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues Appropriating Funds for Fiscal Year 2021 for the General Fund, School Operating Fund, and the Capital Improvements Program Funds.
All right, and I guess I would like to make that announcement, but I might even let you do it, Madam Clerk. Do you want to tell people how they might make comment?
Yes, they can send an email to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. That's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. And I believe we, last time, we gave a window of 10 minutes, so I think that would take us to 9:26. If folks would like to send those along, I will read them after the presentation of the staff report.
All right, so anyone in the public, any member of the public who wants to have their comments heard, should, should go ahead and, and right now, send them in to the clerk at the address she just read, she just gave to you, and she will read those comments in the near future. In the meantime, I'm going to read a disclosure, and then the vice mayor may do so as well. And then we're going to hear a staff report, probably from Ms. Bowel. But first, I'm going to say, I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-20 and Amendment to the 2020 Budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Conley?
I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-20 and Amendment to the FY 2020 Budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right, thank you very much. Now, Mr. Shields or Ms. Bowel, would you like to go ahead and give us a staff report?
Um, Mr. Mayor, just Dave Snyder, very quickly. My daughter is an employee of the schools. She is an independent. So go ahead, thanks.
All right, thanks. We forgot that you're now a member of the team here, and so we congratulate your daughter on her appointment, and we'll have to make sure we get those in, and I don't forget about those in the future. But Mr. Shields or Ms. Bowel, would you like to go ahead with the staff report? Ms. Bowel?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Charter, members of the council. The item before you is the second reading of the first budget amendment for this fiscal year 2021. There are no changes to this item since the first reading in August. The ordinance requests appropriation of 1.01 million in CARES Act funding for assistance to businesses, residents, school, and city COVID-related expenditures. Along with that, we are requesting an appropriation of $400,000 from Stormwater Fund Balance for Stormwater Facility Improvements on Poplar Drive and Midvale Street. Additional information on these projects, along with the major Stormwater Facility Improvement projects, will be provided at the next council work session. With that, I'll conclude my report and be happy to address any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Bowel? We've got seven minutes to kill. So anybody got anything? It's the first time we're at loss for words. Any comments or questions for Ms. Bowel?
Yeah, I'll ask a question, just to, to clarify again. The allocation for the two Stormwater projects, Karen, these, these two projects and the money that's being requested doesn't set us down a path of being forced to spend additional monies in the future. This, this covers those two projects in their entirety, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
These are the two smaller projects. There are larger projects that they will be talking about next Monday at the work session.
Okay. And how are these, I mean, since I only burned 15 seconds, how are these, how are these two projects initially identified? Obviously, a 70-year-old conduit is, is something that's going to have to be remedied, but we've got remediation for two residences there? Could somebody give some clarification on how those were prioritized for the public's edification? I think Zach's on the phone, maybe, or?
Is Zach or city manager?
Yes, I, I can jump on that, council member.
Jody, anyone?
Yes.
Thank you, Zach.
Yes. The, the pipe on Poplar, that was identified, the part, the pipe has actually started to collapse. So if you go out there and visit the site, there's actually a small depression in the side yard. And that, that was discovered through one of our routine inspections. So with that, you know, the, the pipe's a little too far gone to try and reline it, so we're going to replace it in its entirety. And with that, we do have some repeated, I'll call it catch basin overtopping on Laura that overtops and runs through the yards and out to Poplar. So because of that, we're looking at that from a capacity issue as well. And then Midvale, sort of a similar situation, there's repeated flooding in that area. And based on what we found, it's due to the, the large and intense storms that come that, quite simply, it overwhelms the existing pipes. So rather than upsize the pipes to a, an unfeasible size and just push flooding down further with an exorbitant cost, you know, that there's going to, we're looking at a swale to keep the water out of the houses. Yes, it will run through the yard, but the, the goal is to keep it out of and away from the houses to minimize any flooding damage.
Okay, thanks, Zach. And also. Thanks, Zach. And also just like to recognize the new clean-cut look there. Close shave look, I almost didn't recognize you for a second.
Thank you.
Looks good, man. All right, thanks.
So why don't we go ahead and take a motion, and we won't have to act on it for a minute or two, but does anyone have a motion regarding this item?
I move to adopt TO 20-20.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we're not going to take the vote yet, we've got three more minutes.
I do have actually a question.
Okay, then go for it.
And if you know me, maybe I'll take the three minutes. So it had to do with, I think, a question that you raised earlier, Mayor, around expanding the eligibility, the types of costs that could be eligible for this money. And so besides that potential, is the requirement that we still need to spend this by the end of the year? The remaining?
You speaking to me?
Or to Karen or to Wyeth? Not the budget amendment we're looking at tonight, but the remaining balance of the CARES allocation we've gotten.
So currently, based on the guidance we have from the federal government, yes, we are required to expand it by December 30.
So, and we have another 1 point something left?
Well, yes, we have about 1.2 left, which we plan to come to council within the next month or so.
That October work session that we talked about earlier?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, what I spoke earlier of is the possibility that the rules might get more flexible and loosened, but it's, it's not a certainty, and it hasn't occurred yet. It may never occur.
Got it. Do we have any visibility on when we might know? I guess it's federal government, so maybe there is no visibility.
Yeah, I think it's difficult. I mean, there's been some, some updates from federal officials, particularly through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and there has been just that idea that in fact, there's a possibility that the rules could be lessened, but probably not a whole lot more money coming. But it remains unclear where, what the status of all this is and whether there's going to be anything in fact approved before the election.
So given that, obviously, the, the next budget amendment, if we need to spend the 1.2 million, we'll take two votes and a work session, I guess what I might suggest is essentially have a list of kind of additional expenses that we might want to be reimbursed from the funds, and then we can figure out where we want to draw the line depending on what counts towards it, but essentially kind of roughly prioritize in advance. But I don't want to rush at the last minute, figure out, oh, my gosh, now we do have to spend it by end of the year, and it's really restrictive on these buckets. So I'm sure we have this wish list of everything that could be eligible.
Got it.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. It is now nearly 9:26. Any other quick questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any comments that have come in?
I don't have any comments.
All right, well, in a moment or two, I'm going to ask you to call the vote, as it will nearly be 9:26 in a matter of seconds. So when we click over, we'll go ahead and do that vote. I presume there are no further questions about this item. After this item, we'll hear the West End Small Area Plan, and then maybe we'll take a break before we go on to the Washington Broad Project. So that's sort of general plan. So why don't we go ahead and call the vote now, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
I will. The next item is also a public hearing, so we will have that also open until 9:36. It's TR 19-45, Resolution to adopt the West End Small Area Plan as a guiding document in decision-making for planning, zoning, and development review, capital improvements, city regulations, and policies.
All right, thank you. So just once again, can you give that email address for folks who wanted to make comment?
Yes, it's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov.
All right, and they will have until, let's call it 9:37, to make comment, which you will read.
Yes, I can't add.
To the extent that, oh, no, it just changed over. To the extent that you get any comment by that time, your comments will be read, members of the public at this meeting. So who's doing the staff report, Mr. Shields?
Shanna Schaefer will give our staff report tonight, and if I could, just by way of introduction, note that this is such an important area plan for the city. The West End is an area that has so much exciting potential and so many plans that are currently being thought through and some very soon to be implemented. And I think Ms. Schaefer incorporated just a great deal of public comment, as well as property owner input into this plan. The request tonight is for the council, after your final comments and consideration, to adopt this plan. Ms. Schaefer?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of council. So the request tonight, as was mentioned, is for council to hold a public hearing and adopt TR 19-45. The West End Small Area Plan includes a vision for the future of the area, to transform this area into a more walkable, vibrant, sustainable area of the city. As was mentioned, the plan has been further refined by input from an October 2019 community meeting, great input that has been provided by the city's advisory boards and commissions, the Planning Commission, and city council. The plan was last presented to city council at a July 20, 2020 council work session, and updates to the plan since that meeting are provided beginning in line 14 of the staff report. I just wanted to highlight some of the major points of discussion from that meeting and changes that have occurred to the plan as a result of comments from council members. One of the items that was brought up during that meeting was the need to think about flexibility that may, may be needed for retail and office space in result to the, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So in response to that comment, language has been added to an existing strategy on page 3-13 to note the need for flexibility if there are changes to retail resulting in pickup zones becoming more common, and discussion related to flexibility for office space has also been added on page 4-9. The topic of residential being a major part of developments within this area of the city was also a major point of discussion during that council meeting, and the need to think about whether the city has enough flexibility within this area for different types of residential. So in response to that discussion, staff has incorporated some images of Market Commons and Claritin. This is a great precedent example of a project that includes commercial and a lower-density residential transition area. So this has been provided on page 3-5 and 3-6 of the plan. There's also been a note added to the concept map on page 3-7 stating that residential may be appropriate as a ground floor use on secondary streets or to buffer existing neighborhoods. And there's been language added related to the flexibility for different types of residential use on both page 4-6 and 4-7. The plan also, as a result of the work session on July 20, has incorporated information related to encouraging wide multimodal zones to support the vibrancy and transportation needs associated with higher-density developments and taller buildings in this area of the city. And so this language has been provided on page 5-10, along with a new strategy and precedent examples that may work well in this area. Staff has also revised the cross-sections on page 5-12 and 5-13. Those are the general concepts for Hickock Road and West Broad Street, again emphasizing the need for these wide multimodal zones, safe connections for both bike and pedestrians in this area of the city. And then just a couple more points to highlight from this work session. Council had recommended that staff look into other opportunities to solicit input from the public on the plan. So staff looked into a couple options here, and I ended up sending information out through the city's social media platforms, providing an overview of the draft plan, link to more information, and contact info for questions and comments. And then finally, in response to a VIPIS letter, staff has reviewed that letter and discussion of how those comments have been incorporated or included in lines 24 to 60 of the staff report. Following the July 20 city council work session, the Planning Commission reviewed the draft plan as part of their final work session on the plan, and so a summary of their comments and staff responses are provided beginning in lines 19 of the staff report. Just touching on a few of the major points of discussion from the Planning Commission work session, again, going back to the, the idea of the S E E, SESP process possibly being expanded. Planning Commission raised concerns about that particular process being expanded to these areas as it was designed specifically for the schools-related site. And so in response to those comments, staff has clarified that the strategy included on page 3-13 has been revised so that it's not specifically tied to the S E E, SESP process, with the idea that a new process for phase development of master plan sites could be created for the Gordon Road Triangle POA and the West End POA. The specific, specific details of how that process might work would be discussed further outside of the Small Area Plan effort. And then going along on that topic further, a new strategy has also been added to recommend a review and discussion of the pros and cons of the S E E, SESP process to determine what elements the city may or may not want to bring forward as part of a new process. The topic of connectivity between the federal realty property and the West Falls project was also highlighted during the Planning Commission work session. Of course, connectivity between these sites is critical, and so to address that comment, a strategy has been added on page 5-3, which states that, to the extent that aligning the Falls Plaza entry on Hickock Road to the West Falls Church Economic Development Site creates orphan land along the back of the federal realty property, that land would be encouraged to be used for open space with the allowance for density to be shifted elsewhere on that site, so that their project, or their property wouldn't just lose that land. And then finally, as it, as was mentioned, or earlier, as I was going through the staff report, staff did review the Village Preservation Improvement Society letter, and so changes that have been made to the plan in response to that letter provided beginning in line 24 of the staff report. Several of these changes were more points of clarification, but just wanted to highlight some of the biggest changes that occurred to the plan as a result of that letter. First, VIPIS emphasized the need to provide step-down zones within this area. So in response to that comment, more emphasis has been placed on the concept of having step-down zones, having a transition area between commercial and existing neighborhoods. And one of the changes that has been specifically made is providing the precedent example of Market Commons and Claritin, and then providing notes on the concept map that ground floor residential may be appropriate to buffer existing neighborhoods. VIPIS also raised concerns about the discussion on data centers. So that section of the plan has been reframed to make it clear that this area of the city would not be recommended for the traditional hyperscale data centers that people tend to think of, but the idea is to study the use of edge data centers to determine whether they would be appropriate for this area and to look further into the potential economic benefits of that type of use. And then in addition to those comments beginning in line 62 of the staff report, staff made a few additional changes to the plan prior to taking it to Planning Commission for consideration. Again, these changes are mostly clarifying points. The biggest change that was made was a, on page 6-12 of the plan, a section was added related to Hickock Road, which notes the need to reevaluate roadway redesign and travel speeds in order to balance the safety and needs of all users. On September 2 of this year, Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the draft West End Small Area Plan and voted unanimously to adopt the plan and recommend that city council likewise adopt the plan with four changes. These changes are summarized in lines 94 to 101 of the staff report. First, on page 3-10, introductory language has been added under the B2 zoning district subheading, similar to what was included under the B1 zoning subheading, just to make it clear that within the B2 district, there are the usual options available for the zoning ordinance, because as it was reading before, it appeared that the only option was to do the S E E, SESP through the new process that the city had created. An action has also been added to the implementation plan to specifically review the S E E, SESP process. That's provided on page 9-2. An action has been added to the implementation plan to run an RFP process to explore public-private partnerships for the property yard. That's provided on page 9-5 of the plan. And then finally, an action has been added to the implementation plan to evaluate speed reductions and possible roadway redesign for Hickock Road and West Broad Street. And so that concludes what I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council has.
All right, well, listen, thank you so much, Ms. Schaefer. You've done a very thorough job, as always, and we greatly appreciate it. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions. Any questions or comments from council?
Just a quick one from me. Thank you, Shanna, for all your diligence in this. I really appreciate it. I think I mentioned this last time, seeing that our comments are reflected in the staff report and getting a response to each of them, so it's nice to know that the comments are going somewhere. I know you've done a really good job in being thorough and getting community engagement and responding to boards and commissions. Could you remind me where we are with socializing this with our neighbors in the county?
I believe Jim Snyder has been speaking with Barbara Byron about the plan, and he's on the call. He might be able to speak a little bit more about this. I know that we have shared it at the staff level with the planners that are working on a West Falls Church active transportation plan for the county, but Jim can weigh in a little bit further.
Yes, we have had conversations with Barbara Byron, who's in charge of the Planning, Zoning, and Large Department in, in the county, and, you know, letting them know that this is a long-term plan to provide long-term guidance for an area that will be developing or, or changing over many, many years. And it's important in terms of providing some, somewhat of a roadmap for both the city and the county, so that people know what will be coming. And I believe they've seen copies, I don't know if they've seen the final copies, but we certainly will be sharing it with, with their group as, as this is finalized by the council.
Great. Glad to hear the, the staff-level coordination, to the extent that council can be helpful as we talk to our counterparts. I think all of us are happy to do that, too. If we can also make sure that besides kind of the planning department in the county, I think I've realized that within the magistrateal districts, they often have their own dedicated staff and planners and transportation folks, and so let's make sure that the staff there is well aware, too. Thank you.
All right, other comments?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, say to Shanna, thank you very much, and echo what Letty said, that you did a really nice job of pulling comments in and being very thorough with this. So I would like to say thank you, and I'm going to vote yes on it.
All right. Madam Clerk, are there any comments you've received?
There are no public hearing comments.
I've got a comment.
Any additional comments from council?
Yep, I've got one.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Shanna, thank you again, echoing what everybody else has said. I gotta tell you, I've, I've read through this a few times, certainly the, the versions as, as they've evolved. And just to tell you, and this may sound crazy, but I'm actually very excited to see the Small Area Plan play out. I think it's innovative, I think it's creative, and I think it's incredibly well-thought-out. So I am, I am excited and very pleased with where this ended up. So thank you guys for all the hard work.
All right, anyone else?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Does the plan provide for the possibility of a bus rapid transit program along Route 7? And does the plan adequately provide for the application of new transportation and environmental technologies? environmental technologies?
Yes. So the bus rapid transit has been incorporated into the plan, specifically continuing to work with the other jurisdictions that are working on that regionally. That is a concept included in the plan. And I think overall, the plan has really tried to emphasize the need to keep looking out for innovative solutions as cities moving forward and technology is changing. So I think that has been adequately folded into the plan.
Right. Thank you.
Any additional comments, or do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt T R nineteen dash forty-five.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes. All right. Thank you. And I tell you, I know I said we'd take a break after that, but we finished a bit earlier. And I thought, why don't we go ahead and bang out the motor vehicles item and then take a break before we get to Washington and Broad? Madam Clerk, you want to call that item?
Yes, this is first reading for T O twenty dash eighteen, ordinance to amend chapter twenty-six, motor vehicles and traffic, article three, city vehicle license, sections twenty-six through sixty-eight through twenty-six dash seventy-four.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Acosta, are you here tonight?
I am. I'm here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm before you tonight to introduce the ordinance to amend the city code regarding the issue of motor vehicle licenses, more commonly known as the DART, as a car decal. And I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet. Currently, we issue an annual decal sticker. And as you probably know, most localities throughout Virginia have eliminated the car decal due to advances in technology, such as the license plate reader. Only 19 localities still issue car license decals. And in Northern Virginia, only Fairfax City and the city of Falls Church still have the decal. Virtually all of the 19 localities still issue the physical car license decal or smaller localities that don't necessarily have the resources to purchase or operate a license plate reader. At this time, the city treasurer, myself, and the commissioner of revenue, Tom Clinton, are in agreement that the city move to a permanent motor vehicle license decal. That would be our recommendation. We feel that the permanent decal is the right solution for us at this time. The vehicle license fee generates approximately $340,000 annually in our city budget. Most localities that have eliminated the decal have not eliminated the fee. When the city of Alexandria did it, they had to increase their personal property tax rate 33 cents to offset the revenue lost. The plan for this year's decal is we did not mail out decals with this year's bill. The current blue decals are still valid. They don't have a year printed on them or an expiration date. We did this deliberately when we ordered the decal stock last year because we knew this ordinance was coming up. If it passes, if the ordinance passes, we'll initiate a more detailed marketing and education plan to communicate the change to the citizens and to get the finalized city decal out that clearly says permanent decal on it. The fiscal impact would be a decrease in expenditures of approximately $12,000 per year related to printing and mailing. And lastly, if it were decided to eliminate the annual vehicle license fee, in order to offset that $340,000 annual revenue that's generated from the fee, we would need to increase our personal property tax rate by 22 cents. So from $5 per $100 of value to 522 per $100 of value. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get to that, let me just ask you a quick question as relates to other questions. Tell me how this particular year, almost like a transition year, would work. In other words, we've already set the rate, right? And that rate is going to be set through next, what, spring?
Right.
So it's we're kind of halfway, in the middle of the stream, right? So could you explain how that would work this year?
So this year, we've already issued the bills. And in fact, I came home today, and mine were in my mailbox. So hopefully, everybody has them by now, or will get them this week. And the $33 license fee is on the bill. So if we, if this ordinance passes and we move to a permanent decal, the next, you know, next year's budget is when we would have to decide, do we want to eliminate the fee? And in doing so, would we increase the rate, or how would we handle that? So that would be covered in, you know, the budget deliberations for F Y twenty-two. And right now, the decals that are on people's cars are good, you know, indefinitely. They don't have an expiration date on them. And that was deliberate because we knew this was coming up. So if the--
Go ahead.
If the ordinance passes, then we would, with next year's bills, we would send out a true permanent decal, and they would replace the ones they have on the car now.
Okay. And the ones that are on the cars now will be good until, did you say you sent out decals? You didn't send out decals this year?
We did not send them out with the bill. So the ones they have on the cars now are good until we issue the one that says permanent decal on it.
Gotcha. And as to my question last, last week or whenever it was, as to the deductibility of decals versus the deductibility of an actual tax payment, was I accurate in what I said? In other words, that a decal itself is not tax deductible, whereas a payment of car taxes?
That's correct.
So that someone, if they were to make, even though it's not a whole lot of money collectively for the whole city, it is more money. If you, you can deduct $30 a payment when it's applied towards your taxes, but you can't deduct $30 of payments when it's made towards a decal. Correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. So let's go ahead and open it up to questions and comments from council. Any comments, questions?
I had a clarifying question since the ones I asked last week. Jody, so the sticker is used to enforce whether people actually have a sticker on their cars. And based on the staff report, we issue about 350 of those tickets a year, about 20,000 total in fines. Is that correct?
That's right.
Do we use the sticker to also enforce whether car taxes have been paid?
We do. I mean, okay, we don't really use it for that now. We have other means of doing our collections. We, you know, the DMV registration stops and the, we seize people's state income tax refunds, you know. Obviously, we send out delinquent notices and stuff like that first. And if we still don't hear from people, then we proceed with the other collection actions. So we really don't use it for collecting, you know, not anymore. We don't, we have other means of collecting.
Got it. It's really just the 300, so tickets for not putting a sticker on the car where we use the sticker.
Right. And we would still have some revenue from, from people who like don't register their car. And first, they get a warning if they don't register their car. And the parking enforcement officer comes by and sees the car. First, they give them a warning. And then 30 days after that, they give them a warning after 30 days. 30 days after that, they get a ticket. So they would still be issuing tickets for no decal for people who have not registered their cars, even after the warning.
Got it. But where the decals most helpful is that visual, like passing by, and then the parking enforcement officer can quickly issue a ticket for not showing it, and that's the 20,000 revenue.
Okay.
So as I mentioned last week, I think in general, I definitely support the less hassle of the annual decal, but I'd be a bigger fan of no decals at all, both from efficiency and cost perspective, and also in general, just moving to technology that can enforce registration. I think I even have a broader question of, is it worth the parking enforcement officer's time to issue those 300 tickets a year for $20,000 in revenue if we actually think that we have bigger fish to fry? For example, we, you know, pre-COVID, we had parking issues, you know, in the downtown. You know, is that better spent actually focusing his time on that? So that's probably a broader question beyond the scope of this, but I think that's where I'm generally coming from. I'm a fan of not having people, you know, use the stickers. But in general, I would love to see us use no stickers at all, and then think about whether we should even be enforcing this if we think that officer's time is better spent on potentially higher revenue things and more important overall to the city's goals.
I hear you.
All right. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
So, Jody, what happens if I buy a new car this year? Do I get a blue sticker from your, from the office?
Yep. We'll mail you one. As long as you register that car with the commissioner of revenue.
Right. Okay.
Other questions, comments? I guess I would go, did anyone else have any? I'm sorry. I was just going to say, so if we, I mean, personally, as it's sort of been, you can probably infer from my comments, I don't think we ought to charge a decal fee when we don't give decals, and particularly when they're less valuable to our citizens because they can't deduct them. And all things being equal, if your bill is going to read the same, if it's going to be a total of $483, except it's going to be 453 plus a $30 decal fee, but the total cost is the same, except a portion of it is now deductible, which wasn't before, to me, that's advantageous, albeit slightly advantageous, to our, to our citizens. So I would support in the long run, A, not charging a decal fee if we're not giving people decals, and B, just taking account for that by making the fee or the tax slightly higher and making it fully deductible for people. But I don't think that's before us now, correct? Because we're not necessarily taking those actions till the spring. Is that right?
That's correct.
So for my own self, I'm going to put, make a mental note that I'll forget tomorrow, but I'm going to try to remember it longer than a day or two. Unfortunately, that doesn't work so well. But I'm going to make a mental note to myself in the spring to remember that I personally don't support having a decal fee, we don't deliver decals, and that it's more advantageous to our citizens to actually make the thing fully deductible. But in the meantime, the only question for us is whether we want to do away with decals, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And any other comments or questions? Or do we have a motion?
And pursuant to that, Mr. Mayor, I move the grand first reading, T O twenty dash eighteen, scheduled public hearing in second reading for October 13th, 2020, and advertise the same according along.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'd say Mr. Snyder on the second, whoever else that was is on the third. Let's go ahead and move to a vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Why don't we go ahead and take a five, a five-minute or so break, and we'll regroup and get ready to go through the West, Washington Broad Project, if we might. Is that okay with everyone? All right. Let's go ahead and regroup at around 10 o'clock, okay? So it is 10 o'clock, and as promised, we are reconvening for the remainder of our hearing. And so I'm going to ask you, Madam Clerk, to call our next item, if you would be so kind.
I will. Trying to turn off one of my mics here. Would we like to call the two items for Broad and Washington together? Is that how we'll do that?
Yes.
Okay. We have T R twenty dash thirty-three, resolution to amend the comprehensive plan of the city of Falls Church for Gen Yet to change the designation of approximately half an acre of land known as city lot located on Park Place, real property code number fifty-three dash one oh four dash zero one five, from business to mixed use on the city's future land use plan map on application by Broad and Washington LLC. We have T R thirty, twenty dash thirty-four, resolution, one, to grant a special exception for residential uses within a mixed use development project, and two, to increase the building height with a bonus of 15. Is that supposed to be 15 or 16 feet? I have a diff--
I don't know.
It's written out as 15 and--
It's 16.
Okay. There's just a numerical, it's 16?
Correct. 16.
Okay. With a bonus of 16 feet to a maximum height of 91 feet for a mixed use development project on approximately 3.16 acres of land located at 100 North Washington Street and 127 and 131 East Broad Street and Park Place, real property code numbers fifty-three dash one oh four dash zero five one, fifty-three dash one oh four dash zero three six, fifty-three dash one oh four dash zero five zero, and fifty-three dash one oh four dash zero one five.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And so why don't we turn it over to staff briefly, and then we'll hear from the developer or the applicant. I would just know, we have heard this case last week, and so we, we don't need to hear every detail once again. So we can, given the hour, maybe we can just kind of abbreviate things just a bit, keeping in mind that this is probably fresh in our minds. Let me ask the clerk before we go on. Madam Clerk, public comment in the like, is there any public comment contemplated for this?
I need to read my statement first.
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and do that. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. Yep. And this is in regards to both of these items as it relates to Broad and Washington. After consulting with the city attorney, I've determined that the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act does not require that I formally disqualify myself from participation or that I make a statement on the record regarding this matter. However, my own professional interests and the professional interests of members of my immediate family may be indirectly affected by council's action on this next item. Therefore, I will abstain from participation in these matters. Thank you.
All right. And we will let you know, we'll send you a text. Are you going to be dropping off the line during this hearing, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
I'm just gonna, I'll mute.
All right. We'll just keep, keep posted, and we'll endeavor to send you a text when it's time to rejoin us.
Sounds good. Thanks.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, I was just asking you about public comment, whether actually there is any at this stage in the game. And I presume, are we not taking public comment at this point because it's not a public hearing?
Right. This is not an advertised public hearing. So we did take the public comment at the beginning of the meeting for all of the other items. And so when this comes back for public hearing, then we will have a standard public hearing.
Gotcha.
And I don't have any more comments right now.
All right. So for member of the, members of the public, there will be additional opportunities. We know this is of great interest, particularly to the neighbors and neighboring businesses. But to the public as a whole, there are, will be other opportunities, additional opportunities to comment. Some of you commented earlier at the beginning of the meeting through public comment that was received previously, but there will be additional opportunities going forward. So let's go ahead and hear if we can from staff, and then we'll hear from the developer. Thank you, Mayor Charter. And I will turn it over to Akita Ruzy, who's our lead planner for this, for this land use case. We did have, as you noted, a work session last week, and so we will not go over all the material, but just for the public's benefit, we'll hit some of the highlights. And there also have been developments since last week, and the developer will share any information he has on those specifically with respect to addressing neighborhood concerns and the concerns about parking and other issues from the adjacent businesses. As noted at the work session last week, the staff recommendation is to refer this application to boards and commissions. That is the request tonight. And I just want to note that, and if, if that does not occur tonight, the staff does remain committed to working with the council to resolve issues so that this can get into shape for, to have council support for referral out and to work with adjacent businesses, the developer, and the community to resolve questions and, and concerns that have been expressed. Ms. Akita, Akita Ruzy will now provide an overview of the staff report, and then we'll hear from the developer after that. Ms. Ruzy?
Good evening, Mayor and the members of the council. Akita Ruzy here with planning. The item before you is the Broad and Washington Project for Public Hearing Referrals to Boards and Commissions. I'll try to be brief since council had a work session just last week as we just talked, and staff doesn't have a lot of new information to share since then. The questions and comments raised at the September 8th council work session is provided on page four of the staff report, and I believe the applicant has updates to share with council this evening based on those comments and items listed on that page. The only new item from staff is the parking comparison chart, a chart on page seven of the report. That's in response to council's request at the work session. Staff looked at the parking ratios that were approved for recent projects, and the proposed residential parking ratio of one vehicle per unit for Broad and Washington is on the lower end of ratios approved recently. In terms of current parking utilization, based on the data we received from the commissioner of the revenue office, there are fewer than one vehicle per unit registered currently in Tenner Hill, Northgate, and 301 West Broad Apartments, and that is consistent with the proposed ratio for this project at this time. At this time, we only have a draft T D M abstract that contains a mix of strategies and general goals in support of the request of parking reduction. In terms of process, requests for parking reductions are reviewed in conjunction with a final T D M plan with further, further details on the plan elements, and it is subject to staff review and approval by the planning commission at site plan. That's really all the new information I have since the work session. I'm happy to take any questions now or after the applicant's presentation, but I know-- I'm happy to take any questions now or after the applicant's presentation, but I know the applicant has a pretty thorough presentation tonight to cover some of the items that came up during the work session.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the applicant, and again, I would just request that, given that you did have a thorough presentation a week ago, that we can be briefer and more direct and focus on the changes that have occurred in the past week. So with that, please, let's hear your presentation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Scott Adams, I'm a land use attorney with Maguire Woods, and very happy to be back before you tonight on this project. On the the call tonight, we have members of our team, Maury Stern from Insight Property Group, also Laura Connors Hall, who's Creative Cauldron's founder and producing director, Matt Towser from Bowman Engineering, and also Neville Fernandez from MBNA Architects. And I think, as was mentioned in the the staff's brief report, we've been working furiously since last Tuesday to address some of the issues that have been raised by the city council at that meeting, and we've really made some significant progress in that limited period of time on many of the the critical issues that have been raised. And so we wanted to really take the opportunity tonight to primarily share, you know, some of those changes, and then also get some additional feedback from the the city council. And if you go to the the next slide for us. We did want to just maybe quickly reset before getting into to some of the changes in terms of just where this project has been, because I do think it's important for understanding sort of where we're at in the the process. And I think, as everyone knows, you know, this project was originally approved in 2018, and I think the council is aware of the the history there and what happened subsequent to that approval that caused us to to not be able to move forward with that that approved project, and really go back to the drawing board on our concept for this site. And so we came back in in November of 2019 with a resubmission for this property that included a lease, a signed lease with with Whole Foods that allowed us to disclose who that user was and really get a firm commitment from them for this site, and also continued to have commitments with Creative Cauldron to make sure we're providing a long-term home for them within this project and within the City of Falls Church. Subsequent to that, we made two resubmissions for the project, the most recent one in August of of this year. And really, in between the initial submission in November, those resubmissions earlier this year and up until, you know, even today, we've been working very closely with the council, with city staff, with all the stakeholders involved, to move this project forward in a meaningful way, and really make changes that are that address the concerns that we've heard and the comments we've heard from all the different stakeholders looking at this this project. And that includes addressing the the concerns that were raised at last week's work session. And we really do believe that this project is at a point where it's ready to move forward with first reading and get the benefit of the the input from the city's boards and commissions to really refine the project down further and and really get it to a point where it's ready to be approved in a final form by the the city council. So if we can move to the the next slide. And I'm not sure, are the are the slides up for for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. So the, I guess, for tonight, we wanted to really just focus on the the major topics of discussion from last week's work session, primarily the parking, both the in the interim, while the project's under construction, but also the permanent configuration for the public parking that's on the site. And as you'll hear, we've made significant changes regarding both of those aspects, and primarily on the interim parking, really trying to minimize the time when there is no public parking directly on-site during construction. Also, making sure that the off-site parking that is provided in that smaller timeframe, more limited timeframe, is closer to the site. And finally, you know, identifying those areas where that public parking could occur in close proximity to the adjacent restaurants. And then we also wanted to talk about what I would categorize as a pretty major development regarding an agreement with the Park Washington condos that that is sort of hot off the the presses today. On the architecture, you know, we certainly heard loud and clear, you know, the the commentary on the the current architecture for the site and the need to better understand how that architecture is working, and then, you know, potentially make moves to address concerns with, you know, how that that architecture is reading right now. And so for tonight, you know, we've got a full description of the architecture for the project, really looking at the four sides of the building and different views, comparable to some of the views that we showed during the 2018 approval. And then also really talking about how that that architecture relates to the the surrounding properties in a more direct way. On open space, really wanted to focus on how the open space and some of the outdoor seating opportunities that we have, we already have incorporated into the plan really are going to activate the outdoor spaces in the pedestrian realm adjacent to this property and and really help to achieve a real vibrant project for for this area of the city. Additionally, we wanted to talk about some more details on the work-from-home proposal that we talked about last week, and really refine that down and address some of the comments that we heard at the meeting last week as well. And then finally, wanted to provide an opportunity for Creative Cauldron and Laura Connors Hall to really talk about the the need for Creative Cauldron to, you know, be a part of this project and the commitment that they've made to the project and the commitment that that we've made to them. So if we go to the next slide. So I guess maybe starting on the the parking and primarily the the interim parking for the project, the first thing we wanted to talk about quickly was just the the new signal leg at North Washington and Park Place. And I know there there were some questions that were raised about the timing for when that signal would be installed by Insight. And just to maybe bring you up to speed on where we're at in the process, when we talked last week, we were still waiting to resubmit, respond to some of the VDOT comments that we've received. That response has gone into VDOT, and we're continuing to to push forward as quickly as we can to get their their review in place for that new signal leg. But I think, you know, understanding that there's a real desire to get the signal and that intersection improvement in as early in the process as possible, you know, it's something that we've been looking at in our construction phasing. You know, our desire is to get that signal modification, that that new signal put in as quickly and as early in the process as we can. And so we're looking at a specific language in both the VCs and the parking plan to commit to putting that, putting that that new improvement in within, you know, hopefully, the the first phase of the the development of the property. And obviously, there there's some, I guess, leeway that needs to to be put in related to VDOT approval, but I think we're, we feel confident that we're moving in the right direction with VDOT and and moving in a a quick enough pace that, you know, we feel comfortable making that that commitment moving forward. And with that, I'll I'll turn it over to Maury to talk about some of the the developments related to the the off-site parking.
Thanks, Scott. So Scott alluded to many of the moves that we've made since last week are related to off-site parking and the commitments we're willing to make and are able to make during construction when we don't have parking on our site. So so two big moves we we made after hearing comments last week is to reduce down the time that between when we take the temporary lot off of our site and there isn't parking on our site before the the garage gets its temporary C of O and and reopens on our site. So in our original submission, we had thought that that downtime would be the entire construction period of two years. When we came back in August, we committed to no more than eight months. We now think we can, we will absolutely commit to no more than six months, but we think we can get get it down as low as three months. So so a pretty significant reduction in the time that there will not be parking on our site, and and customers of the adjacent retailers will need to use an off-site lot. Similarly, we heard, we heard the concerns last week about the radius around the site of off-site parking, and 1,200 feet was was too wide a range. We we looked at it further, and and we can commit to no more than 800 feet, which is a one to two-minute walk from the corner of of Park and North Washington. And then Scott alluded to, you know, our biggest, what I think our biggest development we heard as a as a big issue for council last week is that we have a signed term sheet with the Park Washington condo owners to lease 50 spaces during that six-month time period when there is no parking on our site and before the the garage opens on our site. And lastly, we will walk through and tagging off of the Bob's EDA pre-discipation earlier, we're committed to and will commit in the VCs to include wayfinding signage, the parking signage that's being proposed for the public parking at our our site. And if you go to the next slide, I'll I'll quickly, again, walk through, we did this last week, but I wanted to take everyone through the the phasing of the interim parking, just so we're, we're all on the same page of of these periods of time when there there aren't parking on our site. So in phase one, that's when we will be demolishing 100 North Washington, and during that time, the city parking lot will remain as is. And as Scott mentioned, we are working hard and and want to commit to implementing the new intersection at Park and Washington during that time or or even before that time if we can. On the next slide, in phase two, is once 100 North Washington has been demolished, we will close the existing city lot and move public parking to the corner of of Washington and Broad and provide at least 64 spaces to replace those spaces on the city lot, and that will be for a period of about 10 months. Then we get to the period I referenced earlier of of three to six months when we will not have parking on our site. And if you go to the next slide, phase three, we've identified the sites, including Park Washington, that we think are reasonable alternatives for for parking within an 800-foot walk of the corner of of Park and Washington. So you can see them on the screen, and and we've we've talked to some of these owners, some are existing parking lots, some are existing public lots. And as was discussed earlier, we, you know, we agree that Georgia Mason Square and Kaiser are underutilized and and are willing to help work with the city on better signage to promote those lots, along with better signage to promote all of these shifting lots around the site during during the phases of construction. And so once, once, on the next slide, once construction of the garage is complete, we've we've already started talking with Doug Fraser and his staff, and we'll continue our conversations to ensure we can get a temporary certificate of occupancy and occupy the garage while the residential and and Whole Foods are being built around it. Every indication from our conversations is that that's doable, we think it's going to happen in in the timeframes we're laying out here. And then six months after that, you go to the next slide, the the entire project will be done and and everything will be open. On on the next slide, we, I referenced a little bit signage, and and as I mentioned, we are very excited about the city's and the EDA's signage plan and want to implement that on our project. We also are proposing to develop a plan, both for interim parking and permanent parking, identifying the locations of those sign of the signage, and in each phase of interim parking, having a signage plan that clearly identifies where the public parking is and how to get to it from each of the adjacent restaurants and businesses and and various corners nearby. If you go to the next slide, please, I'll touch on this rather quickly, but but we have heard some questions about how the the permanent parking operates from last week, and so I wanted to reiterate a few points from from last week. The the first slide shows the Whole Foods level at Park Place, and then the mezzanine level going down to the Broad Street level. The the blue areas are the public parking, which will be open 24/7 to the public, free of charge. And then the pink areas are what we're calling shared public parking, and we've included 75 spaces here, 78 spaces here, that far exceed the demand that we think our retail and Creative Cauldron will will require, and those spaces are open to the public. And we think between a combination of tickets, validation, license plate readers, and staffing, we we can enforce and ensure that people are parking in the right places and and understand through signage, which will show on a couple of slides, that what parking is what and how to get from from various points in the garage or outside the garage to those parking spaces. And so if you go to the next slide quickly, that's, that's the level at Broad Street with the additional shared public parking. And then on the next slide, an example of of some precedent images for signage within the garage to help to identify the various uses, and these are, there are dozens and dozens of garages around the city that that have similar mixes of uses and use colors and signage to identify those locations, and we would, we would propose to do something On the next slide, several slides, as Scott alluded to, we wanted to address the concerns we heard last week about architecture, and this is the same, same precedent images we showed last week, but but I just wanted to stress that we talked through a lot of the projects that Insight has done over the years and more recently, and and we are committed more than anyone in in this market to quality architecture, and we have that same commitment here. We recognize that there is work to be done, especially on the back elevations of the project, and and you'll see we've made some moves since last week, but we fully acknowledge that there's additional work to be done and look forward to working with the boards and commissions, especially the Architectural Advisory Board, to to make those moves and come back with even better design of a project. So on the next slide, I'll take you through the the various elevations. The the first is the corner image, and and we thought it was worthy of of looking at the 2008 approval versus what we're proposing today. And I think there are, you know, a couple of things worth pointing out. Obviously, the the plaza at the corner sets the building back a a good bit from the corner, and it really opens it up compared to our office building, which which was iconic, but but really dominated that corner and didn't create a kind of gracious public entrance to the to the main corner of the city. And the second is the elevation along Broad Street, which we'll look at in more detail on a couple of slides. But you'll see, it's, it obviously has changed because of the public plaza going away from the 2018 approvals, but but it's it's fairly much the same with the two stories at the top of the building setbacks somewhat, and you'll see later, we'll, we'll show you some moves we've made on the lower floors of of that elevation to to more mimic what we did in 2018 and and provide some articulation in in this facade. On the next slide, just looking at the corner in a little more detail, you know, we we heard last week, one of the comments or questions was about outdoor mezzanine space at Whole Foods, and so you can see in this image that that outdoor space wraps the corner at Broad and and onto the plaza, and is a pretty significant outdoor space that complements the the outdoor space at at street level and and at the plaza. On the next slide, this is the East Broad elevation I was referencing, and and if it's possible, I'd suggest staying on this one for a second and then flipping to the to the next slide. This first slide is what we presented last week, and and we heard loud and clear and agreed that this this facade needs some work, it's very flat, it doesn't have a lot of articulation. But on the next slide, you'll see if it, as it flips onto the screen, that that we've made some some moves, albeit subtle and and not major at this point, but in, but for a week, we we spent furiously trying to come up with some some ideas. And so you'll see that there are sort of alternating bays of the first five floors that are are setback, and then we've added similar setbacks on the top two floors and also added in in balconies. So it's, it it may seem a little subtle, and and we agree, but we think it's a, it's a move in the right direction to to break up this facade and and deal with some of the issues with with the flatness that we talked about last week. Going to the next slide, this is the the same elevation we've we've looked at before, the corner of Lawton and Broad, and and you can see those same moves that we made in the middle of the side from from the opposite angle. On the next slide, we we heard last week some requests to to look at Lawton Street in more detail, and and we agree, we did not have all of those elevations fully fully developed at that point, but we've worked on them and and provided some additional ones that we'll see in a second. So this is looking from across Lawton Street back at the project, and you can see the varying heights of the building, of the garage closest to 107 Lawton Street, and as the building steps up to the same height that it was in 2018 at the same point as you work down towards towards East Broad Street. On the the next slide, a view we've seen before, we cleaned it up a little bit to to show again what the changes are from the 2018 approval to today. And so you can see that that 61-foot line midway down the block is exactly where it was in the 2018 approvals. The only change is that the initial height of the building closest to 107 Lawton is taller, but we've carried that same height all the way to the point where it increases to 61 feet versus an additional step up closer to Lawton Street to 35 feet in the 2018 approvals. So, you know, I think it's a softer, although a taller height to start out, a softer move than in the 2018 approvals. On the next slide, a little, little more detail on that, those setbacks. So you can see on the bottom, the 2018 approvals and and the the distances from the property line to those various setbacks. We now have a 40-foot setback to the to the initial height, and then 106 feet to the to the second versus that interim step up at 60 feet from from the property line. that interim step up at 60 feet from the property line. On the next slide, just looking at North Washington, we unfortunately don't have a full dead-on view of North Washington, but wanted to give a sense of what's going on on a portion of North Washington. And you can start to see some of the balconies at each of the corners, and we'll continue to work on this as we develop further elevations further north on North Washington. On the next slide, now, these are some views looking from across North Washington, and we'll look at one in a second on Park Place. We did not get into these last week, and we heard the feedback that we wanted to work on these further, so we've developed them further and added some opportunities for signage and artwork. So there's some articulation in the facade facing Thompson's and Claren Don's with balconies and some gray banding. And then the building towards Park Place, we think is a great opportunity for some art and signage, kind of identifying the work-from-home spaces. So we're showing the same artwork that we did in the 2018 approvals, but we'll talk later about some precedents that maybe we'd like to develop further as we get further into the design. On the next slide, this is a view looking as you get just past Claren Don's down Park Place, so you can see the beginnings of the entrance to the public parking and the entrance to the work-from-home units and the relationship of that building to the office buildings across Park Place. On the next slide, we also heard feedback that council wanted to understand the relationship of the building on Park Place to 107 Lawton Street. So here we have a section that shows the distance from the back of 107 Lawton, almost 155 feet, to the residential structure, which is also setback 40 feet from the property line. And then on the next slide, we don't have a great view from the Lawton Street or the backyard of 107 Lawton, but this red outline will give you a sense of where that building sits in relation to the entrance to the park, which is next to the driveway to 107 Lawton Street. But as we get further into the project, we will certainly develop views that are from the back of 107 and be able to share those as well. On the next slide, I'll run through these very quickly, but we also heard questions about the garage screening. So we took a couple of points along the building and wanted to articulate what's really happening behind the architecture. So at the Whole Foods, the garage above the store, you can see the kind of orangey screening on the outside, a cornice with downlights that will really wash light on that screen so that you're not seeing into the garage. And then the crash barrier and headlight screen on the inside of the garage will screen the lights from the cars in the garage so that they're not seen on the outside of the building. And then going to the next slide, a little further down, near the Whole Foods escalators and elevators, you can see a similar design with the screen wall, but this is adjacent to where pedestrians will be walking and going up and down in the store, so we don't have the crash barrier, we have glazing behind that slot screen. On the next slide, moving down towards Creative Cauldron, this is where we have more residential louvers and spandrel glazing. And again, behind that, the same crash barrier and headlight screening to prevent anyone from seeing headlights in the front of the building. And then on the next slide, I'll turn it back to Scott and talk a little bit about public art.
Yeah, and I'll just touch quickly on public art because it's certainly something that we heard comments on last week. And so we wanted to identify a couple of areas and a couple of potential ideas for public art that we're still working on and looking forward to developing further, but really focused on a couple of things. One is the idea of providing some building murals and building signage similar to what was included with the 2018 approval. And so on the slide that's in front of you, you can see the one sign that's on Lawton Street promoting the Little City and really providing almost a gateway into the downtown area for those coming down East Broad Street. The second one, and Maury touched on it when looking at the images of Park Place, trying to create a location for some public art and some signage for the Arts and Entertainment District, similar to what was included in the 2018 approval, and really trying to help create more of a sense of place for that Arts and Entertainment District and help to tie things together at that corner. The other option, if you can go to the next slide, is looking at different opportunities for art in the public spaces, so both the plaza and the linear park on Lawton Street. And so we're still looking at potential options there for where public art could be placed and what form that takes, but really focused on interactive art pieces, inlays into the hardscape, and things like that that really can help to provide more of a sense of place and tie in nicely with the public spaces that are being proposed. And so we're happy to make commitments in the voluntary concessions regarding public art and making sure that that's appropriately addressed as a binding commitment in the VCs. And so we can go to the next slide, which just shows the Lawton Street park ideas. And then also tied into that, if you can go to the next slide, focusing more on just the pedestrian realm and really a focus on making sure that we're activating that street frontage between the corner and Creative Cauldron. And so wanted to highlight, not only do we have the residential lobby in Creative Cauldron and Whole Foods, but also retail spaces and restaurant spaces along that frontage. And in particular for the restaurant spaces, we've identified outdoor seating locations along a great amount of that frontage to really create some activity and some outdoor opportunities and create a lively presence. And then also, having that tie-in directly to the public park and plaza on the corner. We really think that those things combined with the addition of the outdoor mezzanine dining space for Whole Foods one floor up really is going to create a very vibrant street space for pedestrians and for the public. And also just combined with the fact that we're meeting the streetscape standards and we've got 10-foot clear sidewalks up and down East Broad Street. We really think that all those things are going to work together to create a very activated streetscape that really is going to be a very pedestrian-friendly environment. And if we can go to the next slide. So I'll turn it back over to Maury to talk a little bit more about the work at home.
Thanks, Scott. We touched on this last week, and we obviously, this was a new idea we floated last week, so we wanted to give a little more color. And the images aren't different, but I wanted to take everyone through the concept again. So we are willing to commit in the VCs to one floor, starting with one floor of work-from-home units, which is about 10,000 square feet per floor on the Park Place side of the building, and then open to, based on demand, doing several more floors on that side of the building. But we think there's at least demand for the 10,000 square feet, which is about seven units, and are willing to explore doing more down the road if working from home really is a long-term thing. So as we mentioned last week, there's a separate lobby on Park Place already, which we're going to bring up into the residential work-from-home part of the building, make that lobby feel more commercial, and provide office-focused amenities on those floors like shared conference rooms, workspaces, computers and printers and the like, so that it really caters to people who want to work from home who don't want to set that up themselves. On the next slide, you'll see the four-floor plans we talked about last week. We've identified the square footage of each, and some questions came up related to design and how they would function and how they could function if someone did not use them as a work-from-home unit. And we really think that there's a way to design them so that the spaces, for example, in the two-bedroom that has an office to the right, the floor plan on the far right, that space really doesn't work as a third bedroom. It really only works as an office. And that's their number of design ways we can do that and code-related ways we can do that. And so we're still developing all those details, but we do feel like there's a real way to do that so that they truly are two bedrooms with an office, not two bedrooms that someone would use as a third bedroom. On the next slide, I quickly go through the precedent images that we brought up last week and use these as we develop this concept further, and same on the next slide for some of the amenities on the floors of the office. And then on the next slide, I'll turn it over to Laura Connersell, who'll talk a little bit about Creative Cauldron and our commitment to them and their commitment to us. Laura, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm muted. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I just want to kind of point out some of the really critical things. You know how important this is to Creative Cauldron. As you read in the letter that I put, this is, for me, the most incredible opportunity after an 18-year journey. We rooted ourselves in the city of Falls Church, and we've become an important amenity for so many people. And this is the culmination of all of that work. There are some really critical things that people need to know. I mean, just the square footage in general is 2,000 square feet more than what we currently have. And what you should know is that the 20-year affordable simple fee lease that our developers are proposing is actually equal to the current price that we are paying for our 3,000-square-foot space. So it's affordable, it's a longer-term guarantee. The space will be designated and built out as a black box theater, not retrofitted as a little retail space. We've had extreme limitations in what we've been able to do. I have a world-class designers for our shows, but I think it's very telling that even though we've won so many Helen Hayes Awards and been nominated for so many, we have had very few, we've only had one design nomination. And that comes just because of the fact that it is not a theater. It is a very, very limited space. This will give us more seating capacity. It'll also give us the ability to be having two activities go on at the same time. We're really excited about the proximity to the public spaces for our summer camps. We see the corner area just a great place where we can maybe provide very easily some public performances and maybe some sneak previews. So it's a very exciting project for us, and it's at a critical time. We have had four owners in the 11 years that we've been in our space, four owners. And they've all been national and international firms that frankly have no real investment in the community. The passion that Rick Hausler and his team have for the arts and his commitment to Creative Cauldron is really something exceptional for a developer. I've talked to my colleagues all over the Theater Washington community, and no one has this kind of a proposal that's being offered to them. So forgive me my passion, but this is very important to Creative Cauldron and all of Creative Cauldron's patrons who are depending upon us to have a future and a future home. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for yours. Anything else, development team?
Yeah, just quickly, Maury, I wanted to touch on the next slide. We've been through this before, but I think it's really important to point out the fiscal impact of this project, that the current net revenue that the property is generating with two fledgling office buildings and a vacant retail is $116,000 per year. The net fiscal impact of our current plan is over $2.2 million a year, almost $2.3 million a year, compared to 1.5 in the previous approvals. The current assessed value of the property today is just over $13 million. And when we're done, it'll be in the range of plus or minus $150 million. And I touched on it last week as well, but Barcelco studied the net fiscal impact of our approved 2018 office building in isolation compared to the Whole Foods, and it's $55,000 a year versus 1.1 million that the Whole Foods is generating. So it's significant fiscal impact that this project will generate over what was approved in 2018 and what the site is currently generating. So with that, we think there are a lot of real positives to this project, and I'll wrap up by saying we've worked exhaustively over the last week and through the weekend to address the comments we received last week at the work session and address threshold issues that council raised. We do feel like that we can work through the remaining issues during the boards and commissions process, but I also want council to be aware of the impact of delays in the schedule. We are extremely concerned that delays may have significant impacts with our current financial partners that may impact the project as a whole. And we also believe that delays will send the wrong message to our financial partners for the development when we move forward with it and to our major tenant, and just want to make sure that that point is very clear. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions and comments from council. Any comments from my colleagues? Questions?
I have questions, but I don't always have to go first.
All right. Well, go ahead. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So question first for staff. Ms. Ruzi, thank you for quickly responding to the question around actual parking utilization. And I think you had pulled the three most recent projects to look at the ratios that were kind of below one car per unit. My question is, did we adjust for a different mix of units in those buildings, or is it just kind of an average based on the number of units?
It's just an average based on the number of units. We didn't do any adjustments or just raw numbers that we got from the commission of the revenue office.
Got it. So I mean, in general, I would assume similar demographics, and given the proximity of those buildings you use are probably about the same from transit, and rental rates are probably going to be similar to what will be proposed here. But I guess that would be my only question, is whether the mix of units in those buildings is different enough from this one. That might change it, but in general, it looks promising, I think, that we're seeing less than one car per unit. But if you could follow up on that, I think that would be helpful.
Will do.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to questions for the applicants. So first of all, thank you for paying attention to the previous discussion on parking. I'm glad you mentioned Kaiser and George Mason Square because that's been something that I think we've long talked about being underutilized. So I do think that's important. I appreciate all the hard work. Clearly, I think it's evident that you guys are really trying hard, and so I do appreciate how fast and furious you've been working the past week. On parking, as you know, that's probably going to be one of my top questions. How many spaces are available at the Park Place condos, office condos beyond the 50? So I mean, how many existing are in that surface lot that they have?
My understanding is about 25. It's plus or minus 25. I don't know the exact amount, but they would like to keep those for the uses they have that have customers who come on the weekends or at night. So those are the minimum spaces that their owners feel like they need for those periods of time when the public would be parking in the remainder.
Got it. So you think 50 is really the top of what you think you might be able to get from there?
I do think, based on the negotiations thus far, I mean, it's nine or 10 different owners with very different businesses and very different hours. I do feel fairly confident that once we got into it and worked with them and we started having cars parked there and saw the utilization that we might be able to negotiate more, but I think at this point, they're not willing to give us more than the 50.
Yeah. That's too bad. I think we were really hoping to get as close to 64, if not more, as possible because I think, from the city's perspective, that is the public spaces. I think I certainly feel an obligation to preserve as close to 64 as possible. On 107 Lawton, thank you for the additional elevations. I think my concern was less around looking at Lawton because I know that you guys are tapering as you head towards the corner of Lawton and Broad, but really, what is the perspective from the back of 107 Lawton? So while you do have 40 feet setback from the property line, it is 55 feet of height for that new, I guess, city garage plus the work-from-home units. And so I'd ask that we work on whether there's a more reasonable look to that and make sure that the residents there are comfortable with that view. Moving on to the mezzanine space. I forget which page that was on now, but I noticed you had both indoor and outdoor mezzanine space for the Whole Foods. And I had heard either in the staff report or from city staff that there was some debate on whether the Whole Foods indoor mezzanine space was being counted as tax-producing or revenue-producing, I guess, as well, versus what you guys count as. Could you elaborate on that further?
Some issues on mute. We are, in our fiscal impact, counting a good portion of that mezzanine space as revenue-producing. of that mezzanine space as revenue producing. We, we are working very closely with Whole Foods. We will work very closely with Whole Foods to, to design it, but it's too early in their process to identify exactly how much. I, I don't have it in my tongue, but Scott may, may know the exact square footage that we're assuming on the mezzanine for revenue generating space. And I do not know the number that the city used in their study.
I, I believe we're only incorporating that space for its real estate value, not revenue generating. Becky is on, if there are further questions on that. But I know Becky thought that there was no clarity on the use of that mezzanine space, so she only incorporated as, as for real estate value of it.
So I'm hearing from you that it's too early to know kind of exactly how that spaces. So having been to the Clarendon one a lot where they do have that upstairs mezzanine, I guess it's primarily like outdoor, like dining area, so not additional places where you could buy things from. If that's how this space is envisioned to be used as well.
I, I think it's probably likely that the outdoor space would not be revenue producing. We're basing our projections on the similar stores that have indoor revenue producing mezzanines, which a number, you know, Clarendon's a good example that has coffee, kind of a coffee bar. I think they have, you know, beer and other, other alcohol at that, that bar. The one in our H Street project is more set up like a bar. The borough has actual restaurants and, and food. So we've, in our, I, we'll look up the exact square footage, but in our projections, we're assuming that a similar square footage is generating revenue and is a similar use to what they've done in recent stores.
Got it.
And I'll just, just to quickly add, I guess, you know, also for the areas that are just purely for outdoor seating, you know, those do drive sales at the, the Whole Foods because it, it draws people in for the lunch crowd because there's an area for them to buy something and, and sit in and eat, you know, in addition to, you know, dinner and breakfast as well. So I, I think in our view, you know, the, even the, even just the, the purely seating areas and the mezzanine do help to drive people to the site and to buy things at the, the store.
Okay. So while we're talking about kind of space and what counts and what doesn't, does the outdoor mezzanine space, does that count towards your public open space numbers?
It, it does not. That, that is not included. And actually, we didn't include that outdoor mezzanine space in our private open space numbers either. We, we only counted the, the three courtyards. So that, that space is, is considered part of the, the Whole Foods square footage, not, not open space.
Great. Glad to hear that answer. On the work from homes, I'm glad to see that you guys will commit to one floor and hopefully more than that. How does the space that is kind of office going to be counted for tax purposes? I guess, given that it's not supposed to be residential, how does that work since it's kind of one front door?
That, that's a good question. I don't know that I, I know that answer. Maybe some, some city staff may have a better answer than, than I would.
And we don't have to have the answers tonight, but I think, given that's probably sounds like it's a new thing for everybody, something I think we should know the answer to or find out or at least work through. Let's go through my notes. So those are my questions. I'm happy to save my comments till later if there's other people's questions, or we'll do comments now if we're all just going at once. Mayor?
Go ahead. Why don't you do your comments?
Okay. So in general, again, I appreciate the diligence, diligence that you guys have shown. I think we're seeing good progress on parking. Like I already mentioned, I would love to see it as close to 64 as possible. And I know that, you know, 50 sounds like it's as good as you can get across the street. But since you've been working so hard for the past week, I'd love to get further along. On Kaiser and George Mason Square, I think the opportunity there is really to unlock that and to really make sure the public knows it's there because we have a great deal there. And perhaps you can accomplish what the city hasn't been able to, which is really get the signage better. Because we have the, the agreements in place. I really think using, you know, the similar branding, I think I've long talked about the idea of a light up parking sign that turns on when it's public parking hours as opposed to the dinky little sandwich boards that you see around town. So if that's something that Insight would be willing to help us with and make it consistent across the different sites, I think that'd be great. So that's kind of my first comment on parking is let's get to a reasonable and fair plan to replace those 64 spaces as close as possible. Second, which I haven't mentioned tonight, but I will reemphasize from my comments last week, is assurance around Whole Foods. So I know that you guys have the signed lease and clearly they are your anchor tenant. And I think anybody would be happy to have them, especially in this economy. So I do realize that. That said though, the city clearly has been burned in previous places. You know, we had commitments and a lease with Fresh Market. And so I want to make sure that we are learning from that. And if there's creative ways to make sure that we can balance both flexibility for you all with assurance for the city, let's try to find that because I think we all understand what our interests are here. And ultimately, you guys want to bring the Whole Foods, we want the Whole Foods. And so whether it's sharing, you know, a redacted copy of the lease, writing in VCs, or some other sort of assurance, I think the city would like more guarantees that it is indeed a Whole Foods and not a run-of-the-mill grocer there. So that's number two for my comments. Third is around public open space. I know that right now we're at, I think it was 11%. I would love to see us closer to 15%. So given that you have a lot more residential density in units compared to 2018, I think it's fair that those residents should deserve more open space. So if you can add to that corner mezzanine and carve out additional square footage there, I think that's, you know, important thing to be able to provide those residents and for city residents as well. Fourth comment is around architecture en masse. So I know you guys acknowledged that you're working on it. I still think more articulation and breakup of that, you know, first block is really important. And then likewise, the comment I made earlier is around Laughton Street. So just like you've worked really hard at the initial block, let's make sure that we are equally respectful to the neighbors at 107 Laughton and beyond, as well as the back of Clarendons and Thompsons. Cause I think that's going to be a permanent view for them. So whether it's public art, making more interesting architecture, I want to make sure that it's something that their patrons can be excited about. And then showing us the rendering, I think was helpful. So as you guys continue to work on that, I think keeping us posted with renderings. And then my final comment, which I will make sure I should underscore early on, is really making sure that you're meeting with businesses and neighbors. So all of this is clearly important, but I want to hear from businesses and neighbors that you all are working with them. I know that you've been working really furiously to respond to my concerns and the rest of my colleagues' concerns, but I want you to apply that same diligence with the businesses and the neighbors. I think realistically, I know you're not going to be able to address all of them, but I want to know that you guys are really doing that outreach and building relationships with them for the long run and not just to get through a, a first reading or approval. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the hard work. I really do think that this can be a great project. So keep up the hard work. I know that probably the, the work from the past week isn't totally sustainable, but do keep it up because I do think that we are seeing much better progress than where we were a week ago.
All right. Thank you. Other comments?
Dave Snyder, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, if I make a few comments?
Of course.
First of all, as a longtime supporter of Creative Cauldron, I'm very pleased that the arts will find a long-term home that is sustainable for them. Yeah, I, I tell you the issues that I have right now and why I'm reluctant to move this forward. Issue number one is we've heard again tonight that Thompson's Italian and Clarendons, two regional draws, and I won't speak for the state theater, but they may be in the same place, have said they're still not there. This is not a new issue. This issue has been around for months, if not years. The second issue is regarding the neighborhood. And unfortunately, our process has given the developer two opportunities to present to council and the neighbors have not had the opportunity to, to discuss it in either the work session, which is understandable, but tonight, which is less understandable. And if we send this to boards and commissions the first time, the neighborhood will have an opportunity or the other businesses to address this contemporaneously would be when we're way down the road and it's a final vote. I think that's regrettable. Both the concerns of the surrounding businesses, which are regional draws, exactly the kinds of businesses that we, that we should and need to support for the future, feel that they're being jeopardized still by this project. Also with regard to the neighborhood, despite the changes, and some of them appear to me to be quite attractive, are still not meeting fundamental needs as expressed by the neighbors. I think there are other issues. I think there's an inadequate amount of affordable housing. And, but, but I want to go back to particularly working with the businesses and the neighborhood. These are not new issues. I appreciate that a little progress has been made, but I feel that we lose leverage if we let this project go forward despite its many positive aspects, including especially Creative Cauldron. I want this project to succeed. I prefer another kind of project, perhaps with fewer residential units, more commercial. The Whole Foods is a great idea, but I'm suspicious of the numbers considering that you have a major, large-scale grocery store less than two blocks away. And so I question whether the one is going to take business from the other. And I want to see much more economic analysis in that to determine how good this project really is from a fiscal standpoint. But I want to go back to my fundamental reluctance to moving forward is founded on two principal areas. The local businesses that are regional draws that are substantial, not only tax generating, but quality of life generating businesses have not signified that they can live with this project yet. Likewise, the neighborhood. I don't think we ought to reward the failure to address those two issues by moving this project forward, which inevitably will be viewed as a first reading and a council approval and therefore make it even that much more difficult to achieve the ends, which I think we all should want to achieve. Finally, I didn't particularly appreciate the comment at the end about you have to do this or, you know, we're going to lose funding or it, which struck me as a veiled threat. I don't react well to that kind of thing. And so I want to see this project move forward, but I want to see the, the surrounding businesses legitimate concerns addressed and they indicate that they're addressed satisfactorily and the neighborhood as well. I think we can do it. It should have been done before. I think there's an opportunity to do it now. If we reward the failure to address these things by moving this project forward, I think it'll be even more difficult to get the kind of project that we all would like to support. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Other comments? Questions? Mr. Duncan or Vice Mayor Connolly?
Oh, this is Vice Mayor Connolly. Letty, the reason that we always let you go first is because you cover all the, the big questions and then I can just follow up in the back there. So thank you for asking all those questions. I do want to thank the team at Insight for listening to our concerns from last week. I do feel like you addressed a lot of them. I, like Mr. Snyder, I would like to see this project go forward. There's a lot of benefits here and I think we are, it's getting closer. And I am not ready to put it forward tonight, but I feel like if we had another couple of weeks of opportunity to hear from the neighbors, hear from the neighboring businesses, the neighboring community based upon these recommendations, I would be more comfortable moving it forward. But now I have a couple of questions. Now that I've said my piece, that for the temporary parking that will be there on site, where's the entrance to that? How's that traffic going?
The, the temporary parking, you mean on, on the corner of Broad?
Yeah, yeah.
Our intention, and we hope to work with the, the neighboring businesses to get their input, is there's an interest on both Washington and Broad. There, there are curb cuts currently on Washington, but there's, there's a nearby curb cut on, on Broad as well.
Okay. It looked like behind the existing businesses, there's some street level parking as well. In one of your pictures?
Behind Clarendons and Thompsons.
Yeah, between Clarendons and the parking lot, it looked like there was street level parking there.
So there is a, the, on the lot where Clarendons and Thompsons were located, they're, they do have a, a parking area behind the, their buildings.
That's part of their lot.
Correct. Yeah. So that's.
Part of their lot. So that would remain. And then so delivery for those businesses would still be the way it has been?
I certainly don't want to speak for them. I think my understanding is they would likely have to have deliveries come off a park into those existing spaces behind their building. I believe they currently use our, our parking lot and, and their trucks come across or go or exit through our parking lot.
Okay. Okay. And I do appreciate that you did look at that east elevation coming into town. I think that's really important and I'd just like to continue looking at that as well. So thank you for that seven day or six days, because we saw this last Tuesday. Six days of, of good progress. Thanks.
All right. Is that it from you, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Sure. Thank you. So thanks to my colleagues for expressing their concerns and suggestions. My wish would be for the boards and commissions that are steeped in the subject areas that have been raised tonight to get a chance at the earliest possible opportunity to sink their teeth into this. So I would love for the CACT to tackle the parking and transportation elements. I certainly would love for the Architectural Advisory Board to do their usual hard scrub of the applicant's proposal, like here from Urban Forestry on the notion of whether we can squeeze out a little bit more open space. I would rather that happen sooner than later, just because I feel that council has been as specific as it can be in expressing its concerns, but we, we need a little more specificity, a little more granularity. And that's what the boards and commissions deliver for us. In terms of the negotiations with the neighboring businesses, I was encouraged to see the communication from David and Rebecca Tacks this afternoon. Hadn't really focused on the fact that there's two elements of the negotiations. There's the interim and long-term parking element that concerns them. And then there's sort of ongoing impact of construction on their operations. And I gather that that latter topic is the subject of private negotiations, which are subject to non-disclosure agreement, which we, I guess, will as a council not ever know about. In other words, some amount of money is going to exchange, be exchanged between the applicant and at least some of the local businesses to help offset the impact of construction on their operations, which I think is good. I'm not sure how we know more about that. That's a question as much as anything. Maybe it's a question for the city attorney. I don't know. But if I'm not going to know a whole lot more about that, that's just another reason to, you know, get this then moving into the areas that we can apply our expertise at the boards and commissions levels to, and hopefully see some progress on. My closing question is, what is our council calendar for the next month? My understanding was that we are not going to meet in the last week of September. So, I mean, normally, we, you know, many times before we've gotten to this point and, well, it needs another couple of weeks. Okay. Well, that's a reasonable, reasonable proposition, but my understanding is we're not going to meet again in a couple of weeks. We're not going to meet again as a full council until after Indigenous People's Day on October 13th, which to me feels a little long. I feel like we've, you know, gotten some good momentum. I'd like to keep that momentum going. My way to keep it going would be to, you know, get it in the boards and commissions hands and have them, you know, have ample time to chew on it. And if we're not going to meet as full council until October 13th, that's my reservation about, you know, delay. So that's, I'm closing with a question, which is, what is our plan for meeting and considering this and other topics between now and the middle of October?
All right. Thank you, Phil. So I mean, as you say, we have canceled that meeting in end of, or end of September. So we can talk about that further. We do have a mayor's meeting day after tomorrow to further discuss this. But why don't we try to substantively move this along as best we can tonight? And then we'll figure out where we're going to head from, from there. A couple of points I'd like to make. One, something we've done in the past with most major projects over the past few years is a walking tour, which I know is difficult in today's environment, but I would like staff to take a look and see how we can do it in a safe and socially distanced manner. and see how we can do it in a safe and socially distanced manner and get together outdoors in a way that people can visualize what's happening much better than they can on two-dimensional drawings. So I would just ask staff how they, maybe they could put some thought to how we can get together. It could be in small groups or some other way that the neighbors in particular, but others as well, can visualize what's happening and where and what the massing and setbacks and the like will look like. So I think that'll be helpful to the neighborhood, and I hope it'll be helpful as well to the developer. But I would ask staff to give some thought of how we can do that, as we've done with other projects. A few other concerns or questions of mine is I would agree with this notion about ensuring that a Whole Foods is what turns up here. You know, there may have been a day in the past when any grocery store would be just fine, but I don't think that's the case in this particular project. And so a Whole Foods, I think, is exciting for the community. It has some great fiscal numbers, much more so than just, you know, a typical established grocery store. So I would continue to give thought to how we can ensure and get comfortable that that, in fact, is what will happen if this project's approved. Also, I would just comment again on the architecture. I appreciate you've done some more renderings possibly or elevations since our last meeting. I do think the architecture is still flat and needs more articulation. It seems as though the 2018 approved version is more refined, frankly. I'm still not a fan of a semitish board or that sort of thing, so as far as materials go. It looked to me as well, looking at the rear, the Lawton Street elevations, and I don't know whether this is accurate or not, but it felt like it was precast concrete. And I don't know which elevation that is. It's probably about 10 back or so. But that would be something I would not be favorably inclined with. And maybe you could just confirm the materials. It's from the Lawton Street view is one of the elevations or perspectives. Yeah. What is the material of the back kind of low-rise building, portion of the building?
This is Neville Fernandez from MD&amp;E Architects. I can give you a brief idea of what materials we have there. It's a little hard to see, but we have stone, like a plinth, that varies anything from five feet to at least 10 feet. About that, what you would refer into as gray concrete, it's really just vertical siding, semitish siding.
What kind of siding? Semitish siding?
Yeah. And it was relieved with windows that showed louvers in there. Those are actually looking into the garage, but those are fake. They're just articulation. The architecture there was just trying to reference what you find in residential areas with siding. And it was trying to give that residential character with the paired windows spaced appropriately to feel like a townhouse or feel like a residential massing. We can change the color to anything. We just thought we'll differentiate a little bit to gray. We can do anything we want there. It's just the color, but there is no precast concrete right now in this project.
Yeah, I would just say to you, please don't take offense, but I have to say personally, it just doesn't do anything for me. From what I'm looking at right now, almost reads like a prison, you know, with the very thin, you know, windows and the like. And I'm not a fan, as I said, of semitish board. I just feel like it's a cheap material. And so that's my perspective. If I were in that house at 107, it's not what I'd want to look at. If you can show the elevation from before, the 2018 elevation from Lawton, it, to me, reads in a much more attractive fashion. I don't know if that's a handy slide, but it was a slide or two around there. I thought you showed kind of a before and after. Not that one.
It's Slide 22. And actually, you know, you can see, you can see the 2018 elevation. You can see that stone base. That stone base is continued. And actually, at the corner, it rises up almost 23 feet. So we are wrapping that corner with that stone base. And there's a large kind of like a bay window-like feature that you can see as, you know, kind of like right now shown as louvers. This stone base does turn the corner, and if you go to that view, which was on page 20, you can see that that stone base, that stone base continues at that 23-foot height. So actually, I was wrong. I was underballing how tall the stone base goes. It goes all the way to the end of the Transformers. So that's probably the view you're going to see from 107. You probably want to see that because of the trees, but that's what you're going to see from 107. And then you actually see that entire facade dropping down maybe in three or four feet. We haven't mentioned that with the detail, but the reason that's happening is because we have a ramp there, and we can actually drop the facade there. So we're trying to use every inch we have in our toolbox, trying to reduce the height of the massing along this park to really make a better project. I think, you know, we can definitely change the color. This is not precast. We can change the color to whatever is needed. We can definitely go to more of a beige or something more akin to a the natural color. That's absolutely, that's very easy. It's just paint. There's nothing set here about this architecture. We can change the pattern of the fenestration. But I think, you know, there's a strong stone plant. I think everyone's going to like that natural material and the feel of that. It's definitely going to have a rustic look there.
I got to tell you, it's not the color that's bothering me. I'm just not, I don't think semitish board works, and I don't think the window design or the, you know, the faux windows or whatever that might be works. But look, we don't have to redesign it now. That's just my two cents, and I'm just one of five people. But that's the sort of the sense that if you want my opinion, that's what I'm telling you, is I have some issues with that. And I would say overall, I think more articulation. It just reads flat, and maybe these are early elevations, and so there's not much articulation there yet. But it just, that doesn't read like there's much there, Juliet balconies or whatever. That just seems, the Lawton Street side, for example, from what I'm looking at, it just reads flat, and I think it would benefit from some articulation, possibly, you know, mixing of brick colors or something like that. But just a thought for you. So let me give you a few other comments as well, as while we're staying on this perspective. I don't know if you could add landscaping to the roof of the garage so that it actually shields some of the back of the building so that the people who look at it don't necessarily see the full mass, but use the garage as kind of a green roof. It doesn't have to be fully green, but just put some landscaping up there to kind of soften that massing. I think that would be helpful. I do think also just the step back as well, if you could, I don't know if it's possible to do any step backs here, but the building on the Clarendon side also reads just very vertical for kind of the rear and the transition to a one-story building. Seems like there's no real transition. Let me see what else I got here. Let me ask you about Creative Cauldron. So I see that they've got a 20-year lease. Laura, are you still on the phone right now?
Yes, I am.
So what's your lease? How long is your lease right now?
It ends in June of 2021.
And how long was it originally?
Originally, it was a 10-year lease that was negotiated by the city attorney without an extension. That was kind of in our ignorance, not asking for that. And when our current owners, or I guess the owner just before, you don't even want to know how many owners, but when they found out there wasn't an extension, they came back to us and were not interested in favorable terms. So they increased our rent by $20,000 a year, and that's the current lease that we're under. However, they, in the process of that, we got a new owner because Simpson Housing Group and LaSalle were co-owners somehow in the project, and they split or diversified their portfolio. And so now we are negotiating with LaSalle. And we don't know whether or not they will, what they will do, whether they will, you know, give us another extension or what. That's our position.
Got it. And so the 20-year lease you're getting, or you hopefully will get, does it have any options?
It has, basically, the 10 years is set. Our lease is set for the first 10 years. And then the second 10 years is basically also set with just a, you know, a 3% increase or whatever, something during that period.
So wait, so you got a 10-year lease, and then after 10 years, it goes up 3% a year?
Yeah.
Okay. And then after 20 years, what happens? It's over?
We're still in that negotiation process. We're still in that negotiation. We would have a, I think, a, what we've discussed is a typical kind of negotiation for, you know, option to extend.
So I would just suggest to you that you may want to see if you can get some more options, because 20 years will be as quick as the 10 that you just got through with, you know. So I don't know what the developer has to say about the possibility of extending that lease for longer periods of time, but given that I think it's of significant importance, and clearly, I think you all agree, because she's part of your presentation, I would see if you can get some additional options so that we're not having this discussion again in 20 years.
I'll just add to what Laura said. That's always been our intention. We signed a term sheet with them several years ago and paused our negotiations on the lease as a result of a previous project. But our intention is to negotiate something that works for them and gives them a long-term home. And I think our conversations to date have indicated that we're going to get there once we pick up the lease negotiations again.
Gotcha. Well, I would just suggest that having some options beyond 20 years would be, would meet their needs. That they don't have to exercise them, but at least they have the option in case they want to stay longer, and hopefully they will. Gotcha. Okay. Well, so again, I think that, like my colleagues have said, I do, I would like to see progress on the parking situation. It looks like you've made some. It'd be certainly good to wrap that up to everyone's satisfaction, which looks like it has not yet happened. I also think our neighbors really need to, our residential neighbors need to be much more involved. And in some ways, I don't know if that's anybody's fault, but maybe it's just the circumstance we're in that people have not been able to get as close as they would like physically and maybe in other ways to this project due to coronavirus and the difficulty in communicating and observing things through papers and electronic means. But I do think that they need to have some more input than maybe they've had to date. And the idea of a walking tour, again, which might be challenging, but I think is doable. And I'd like us to find a way to try to get onsite, as we've done in the past, and really let people physically see where things are going to be and how big they're going to be would be helpful to this process and help move this project along. I don't know. I do think in the long run, you know, this is something that will be beneficial to the city. I do think a Whole Foods grocery store is an exciting addition to the city. I think grocery stores have been one of the bright spots financially for the city in the past six months. And I do think they enliven our downtown. They bring people here at all hours. They bring people to shop in our city who would go elsewhere, who might just go outside our border to where Whole Foods is right now and spend their tax dollars somewhere else. So I think grocery stores are a general great benefit. And the fact that we have other grocery stores in the city, certainly, I think it does give you some pause, but they do occupy different markets and submarkets. And so I feel confident there is room for more than one grocery store or two grocery stores in this city, and they all can thrive and help bring new customers into our city. But with that being said, let's sort of take the pulse of what people want to do right now. I've certainly heard some pause from folks, and I don't know whether that's a majority or not. And so we can try to figure out whether this is going to be deferred tonight or whether it'll go forward. I've certainly heard a few people who feel like this needs a little more time before they're willing to vote on first reading. And so we can either do that through a formal motion, or we can do that informally through some discussion right now. Does anyone have thoughts about what they'd like to see happen tonight? We can, again, do that through a motion. Ms. Hardy, it was a little unclear to me whether you'd be willing to move forward with this matter tonight. Did you want to maybe articulate a little bit more what your feelings are and how you'd like this matter to proceed?
So I really liked your idea, Mayor, about scheduling a walking tour. So if we can do that in the next week or two, and hopefully Maury and Scott can bring us more progress. I guess if you've made good progress in the past week, if we give you two weeks, hopefully you can double what we've seen.
All right. So it sounds like you're not willing to proceed with this matter at this time, proceed with first reading at this time.
I think it can use more time.
Okay. All right. So in reading what I hear from other folks as well, at least two other folks, I feel like this is not going to pass on first reading tonight. And then a deferment, we can either do that formally or informally, is what is going to happen or the best outcome for the developer right now. And so we can take, do a motion, and I don't know if the city attorney has any guidance for us on whether we, in fact, should do a motion to defer this matter or, in fact, can just informally table it and see what progress is made in the next few weeks. Are you on the call, city attorney?
I am. And I think I would recommend that if you want to set it for another date, that you, unless you don't know when it should come back, in which case you could just informally table it. But I would usually recommend that it's better practice to set it out for a definite date to come back.
Okay. Well, so the next date, Mr. Shields, as far as scheduling, what dates are available?
The next regular council meeting is Tuesday, October 13th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we could reschedule the meeting for Tuesday, the 26th, that we had talked last week about taking off, that we took it off because we didn't have anything on the agenda. But if there is something that would be on the agenda on that date, can we reschedule that meeting?
Well, we can. I typically don't like scheduling meetings to sort of fit the schedule of developers. And I guess I would say then maybe we should consider that to be a meeting off, that meeting where there is a holiday, and take that as a meeting off as opposed to the 28th, if that's, in fact, what people want to do. I do think it's somewhat dependent on getting a walking session or walking tour set up, if, in fact, we can do that. You know, as Ms. Hardy indicated, I think people would benefit from that, as would the developer. So I would hate to necessarily reschedule for a time, and then we have difficulty scheduling a walking session, and then it ends up being that we meet for no reason or not. We don't have necessarily as much resolution as we would like. So I don't know whether we should go ahead and put that back on. If we do, I would say let's cancel the meeting on the 13th or the 14th or whatever it was supposed to be. And I don't know if people feel that there's importance or value in a walking tour. Maybe people feel like there's not a whole lot additional that can be gleaned from that. I happen to, you know, think they are of use, but what do other people think? All right. I'll take that as a...
I've always learned a lot from the walking tours. We did do one on this project two years ago. And I think it was very helpful to have the neighbors and other community members there to walk and see. I don't know how you do a walking tour when everyone has to be socially distant. But I do find them helpful.
I do think that with the parking discussions, we talk about how far it is to walk from those temporary parking spots. I think it's important for people to experience that themselves. So I already said I think I'm a fan, so I think we should try to get one in.
Why don't we do this? So if we need to, why the meeting before the 13th, whatever that is, the 6th or the 7th or the whatever, we can also, that's a work session, but we can also schedule a regular item on that week as well, correct?
Yes, that is possible.
Okay. So we can, if we need to, convert that in. And we can also, if we wanted to switch out the 27th or 28th of this month, if things happen more quickly than otherwise, we can also switch that. So I guess maybe, and I don't know, the city attorney's welcome again to comment, but I guess I might say that we'll reconvene no later than the 13th or 14th of October with the hope that we can do it before then, either converting part of the work session on the 6th or the 7th to a regular meeting, or possibly even having a regular meeting on the 27th or 28th of this month with the idea that the meeting on the 13th or the 14th would then be canceled. What do people think of that?
Okay. So the 28th is a holiday. So we're not going to meet on Monday, the 28th.
No, the 29th then, whatever the next day is.
Tuesday, the 29th, Monday, October 5th, or Tuesday, October 13th. Tuesday, the 29th, Monday, Monday, October 5th or Tuesday, October 13th. Those are your options.
Yep.
Okay.
And I guess I would say as quickly as we can do it, let's do it. I would like to at least find out what the city staff thinks about the idea of doing a walking tour. It may be that some other progress is made with the parking or other things of interest to people, but it may not be. I mean, right now we've got, I think, a commitment for 50 parking spaces or thereabouts at the office condo. But I think people want to see a little bit more maybe and also have some more input from the neighbors. That's what I've heard tonight. Maybe that's not accurate, but that's what I heard. And so if that's the case, I think these are, that is a way to get that input.
So it sounds like your walking tour is, has been well received. Could we invite the boards and commissions just to get a little bit of a jump? I mean, I, I don't know what staff feels about how long they want, if it were ever able to clear a first reading hurdle, how long they want it in the hands of boards and commissions. But if we did not act, we're not going to be able to act, it doesn't sound to me like until October 13th. So then, does that give staff enough time to hear from boards and commissions and still get this finished by the end of the year? Or is it, is this, is this going to put us on a course where we would need to kick it over into 2021? Ms. Ruzzi, if you want to speak, you certainly can.
Oh, Wyatt, you can go ahead. I was just going to kind of refer everybody to the schedule at the end of the staff report.
Yeah, thank you.
As the boards and commission review is tight. We did chat internally about the possibility of delaying the project, but it's, it's, it's going to be tough. I think we'd have to look at the schedule to see if it's possible to still have the end approval or final consideration in December. But, but there is a schedule that's at the end of the staff report that might be helpful to everyone in terms of looking at boards and commissioner review process.
So last meeting for the year is on December 14th, right?
That's right.
So this is Dave Snyder. I'm, I'm willing, you know, if the fundamental issues are addressed, I'm willing to do a special meeting, provided that it's appropriately notified or do it on a night that we hadn't planned to meet. I mean, to me, are we going to get these things resolved or aren't we? And if we can get them resolved, I'm prepared to move very quickly. And yes, we can have it done by the end of December. But the point is that there are key issues that have yet to be resolved. I'd like to see them resolved. They are not delegable issues to boards and commissions. They're too fundamental. So for that reason, but I do favor approaching this aggressively and moving it forward. But it's critical that these two, in my view, the issues with the neighbors and the issues with the surrounding businesses are the fundamental reason why I'm not willing to move forward tonight, but I would hope to move forward in the very near future.
What do the folks think?
Second one, Mr. Snyder said.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes, I would agree with that as well.
All right. Mr. Duncan, I think we've heard what you had to say. So in terms of timing, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, again, I would certainly like to get this done as soon as possible. It's been lingering, this project has for years now. And the question really is how can we most expeditiously get these issues resolved? And so again, to my mind, I think a more aggressive interaction with the neighbors is certainly going to be helpful and with the commercial neighbors as well. So that's why I've suggested, and I think the walking tours are appropriate really for any development of the scale. And so I don't know what people think about doing a walking tour and then regrouping as soon as possible after that, but with the hope that we'll make some progress.
Yeah. I think that's fine. My general comment on the walking tour is obviously given with COVID precautions, I wouldn't want anyone to feel obligated to come out if they're not feeling safe. And so it shouldn't substitute outreach that the applicant should do with the neighbors.
Of course. And we'll have to find a way and staff will, will be looking at that as how can we do this in a way that's safe for staff, the applicant, consultants, every person. And that could be in small groups. It could be, you know, separated by significant distances. We don't know how that's going to work. It could be in shifts. So it may not work at all. It's just an idea to get that input that I think we've lacked to date because of the challenges of communicating and interacting with people remotely make it much more difficult, I think, to really get to the essence of issues that are, that are important like this. So it's just another try at resolving that. I guess then to try to wrap this matter up for tonight at least, I think then again, I'm not sure a date certain is the way to go if we can, just with the notion that maybe we will reconvene no later than October 14th and hopefully sooner, depending on input and resolution of the issues that have been articulated, might be the best we're going to do tonight. And if people are okay with that, I'm okay with that as well.
October 13th, right? Tuesday, the 13th.
All right, the 13th, you know, no later than Tuesday, the 13th to reconvene on this case, but possibly sooner depending on the outcome of discussions the developer may have. And it may be outside a walking tour. It may just be communications and discussions you have independently of that. And it may be that you can make significant progress outside of that, that means. But we have done them successfully in other projects, including this earlier iteration. And I think they've been useful, but they may not be safe at this time. So, but I, so I would encourage you, as you've heard, to continue to work with your neighbors and seek to resolve these issues outside of that, that kind of meeting if you can. So is that, does that work for people to, again, reconvene no later than the 13th of October after the developer's done additional work with the neighbors and the commercial neighbors and the parking situation as well?
That does work. And I do want to make sure that it sounds like several of us have said, if we can do it before the 13th, we'll do it before the 13th and add it to another agenda or call special meetings.
Yep. I agree with that, Snyder.
All right. Is that generally work for folks?
I would suggest that you make just a brief motion to that effect and let people vote so that it can be a council decision.
All right. Somebody want to take a stab at that as a motion?
Can I move to table this conversation, table or defer, Ms. McCosker?
I think you can defer it to a meeting no later than October 13th or such earlier time as these issues are resolved.
Okay. I move to defer this item to the October 13th at the latest or such earlier time as these issues are resolved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Oh, just let me get the motion down. And so we're for tier 20-33 and 20-34. And I did get the motion. And may I have the second? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Harley.
Okay. Thank you. Ready for the roll call? Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse? Oh, that's right. Yes. Yes. Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with one abstaining.
All right. Thank you all. And we appreciate your continued work to resolve the outstanding matters and we hope to have them taken care of in the next couple of weeks. So we look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next item, which is, let's see.
Consent items?
Yes. So do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Can I just ask a question of Ms. McCosker?
Sure.
My name is on there as an appointment to the Arts and Humanities Council. Do I need to, can I vote on myself?
Uh, yes, you can.
I can. Okay.
Yeah, it's not a conflict in, under the act.
And did somebody call Mr. Lickenhouse to come back?
Oh.
All right. Well, in the meantime, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I moved to the consent agendas.
All right, Ms. Hardy has moved the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Welcome back. All in favor? I'll tell you what, we're going to do a roll call votes. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan? Mr. Duncan?
Yeah.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right. What else do we have? Is this regional committees and the like? Anybody have any reports from the regional or standing committees? Any council member comments? Anything else to say tonight for adjourn?
I don't want to prolong the meeting, but Wyatt, if we could add one more thing to my list of requests earlier, it was related to the grants. I recall with the last budget amendment, we had talked about funding the Tanner Hill mural project on 29, or at least getting the conversations underway.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Maybe at some point we can get update because as I was thinking about the arts grants that we moved in the consent agenda, given that many arts activities we can't really do in the age of social distancing. But I thought that to continue to promote the arts, we can accelerate things like public art that can be done remotely and can be enjoyed while distancing.
Yeah. And the, in the original budget that was presented to the city council on March 9th, there was additional funding in the arts grants basket to kind of create room for the Tanner Hill District, Mural District. And then in the post-COVID budget, that along with basically all other new initiatives were stripped out. So we've got it kind of in our tickler file, but it is, it was not appropriated in this year's budget. And, and I think the Arts Council was not able to fund that this year.
Got it. So out of the ever much, the 25,000 we appropriated in the arts grants, I wonder if all of those activities are actually going to happen this coming year.
Well, I do think that that was a big part of their discussions about what they were going to fund this year. And so certainly the hope was that it would.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. In honor of Dan Z, let's, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned. Good evening.